Good evening. This is Southfield City Council meeting for Monday, February 11th, 2013, conducted as a committee of the whole. In the absence of our city clerk, our deputy city clerk, would you please call the will?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Porcassi is excused this evening. Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Lance is excused. Mr. Moss.
Here.
Ms. Seymour is excused. Mr. Seiger.
Here.
You have four members present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Mr. Porcassi is out of town and we have our two other members are on the sick list. We're going to begin this evening with an update from the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation. I'll introduce this and then Mr. Thorne and Mr. Berish are here from the Housing Commission. Mr. Thorne, did Mrs. Beatty couldn't make it?
She knew about the meeting. She was invited and not heard back, Lamar.
All right.
We placed two additional calls this afternoon.
A bug is going around. Our president of the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation is out of town. Board member Rita Hillman is ill this evening. Mrs. Beatty couldn't make it, but we do have Mr. Berish. So, Mr. Berish, please, I think most of you know him as he is. Besides, Gil Silverman is out of town and Mike Martin.
I can't see you.
The other person on this board is Philip Nell.
You're here.
I am here, right. This is strictly an update. A lot has happened. The nonprofit housing board that oversees the management of Woodbridge Apartments, McDonald Towers and River Park Place has made, is in the process of making some major changes in the operation of these three facilities as well as improvements to the buildings themselves. Several years ago, a fair amount of money was invested in the Woodbridge Apartments. Those 100 apartments were upgraded. We now have roughly 500 apartments in the two other facilities, the condos and apartments at River Park Place as well as McDonald Towers. For some time now, the Nonprofit Housing Commission has been, I would say, saving is probably the least pejorative word, has been saving or letting its reserve fund grow. And consequently, the reserve fund is now in excess of $7 million. And there was some debate with the state of Michigan, Michigan Housing Development Authority, as to who could spend that money. In many other communities, nonprofit housing, the reserve fund belongs to the state. However, we had, as Mr. Berish will recall, back in the 1980s when the, there was a new agreement reached with MISTHA, the housing authority wrote into their contract with the state that the money stays with the project. So, the question was, will this money stay with the project because MISTHA increasingly has denied that, at least any new project, they've denied that. So, several months ago, we had a meeting with MISTHA and they will honor, the control of the reserve fund will stay in Southfield, which is good news. The nonprofit housing board, with Ms. Townsend's help, has hired an architect and a, Ms. Townsend, maybe you could speak to the process just briefly. The company is Hamilton Anderson.
Right. Good evening. I was just thinking that you were going to say something about the architects and that was the one file I didn't bring, but however, we did go through a competitive process as we always do to select an architectural firm. We've used the QBS, the qualification-based selection process, which allows us to review the company's qualifications first. Of course, price is a consideration, but it is something that we bring into play more towards the end of the evaluation process. Can you hear me?
It's a light, little bit of a light.
Oh. We did end up selecting Hamilton Anderson, who has some specialized expertise in terms of working with federally funded, I'm sorry, state-funded properties, if that's correct. Doing some exciting things with other housing authorities, so they were ultimately selected with us, and we went into a contract with them for that.
Don't go away, because we're going to get back, come back to you in a moment. The other reason that we hired this firm is because the renovations that are planned will be upgrades to the kitchens, security, lighting, just freshening these apartments that were built in the 1970s. Many have, still have the original kitchen covers and stained with sauce. But the reason, the other reason that Hamilton Anderson was selected was because to do this work, you're not going to displace the tenant. We need an architect who can schedule the renovation work pretty much, we hope, instead of it being done in a day. You come in and you tear out, put in, doing several at a time, so there'll be minimal disruption to the tenants at McDonald Towers and River Park Place. I'm going to turn the next part over to Mr. Thorne, who will talk about the refinancing of the building as well as a change in management operation.
Why, he's on his way out there. You said they're going to come in, pull out all the cabinets and put it in the same deal. Is everything like cookie cutter?
Pretty much, because they're standard size, the kitchens, they're all the same. So, they can be assembled offsite and then brought in. That's our hope, that it be a one-day renovation.
Council President also serves as the board's vice president, has done an excellent job providing a summary. I'll just hit a couple of highlights. Woodbridge Apartment is a HUD finance property. It was refinanced just a few years ago and has a mortgage that expires on March 1st, 2042. Our current interest rate is 5.84 percent. Upon refinancing, we expect to get that to anywhere in the 3% to 3.5% range. We make a monthly payment of $14,759. We're expecting that payment to drop almost $5,000 a month. Gives you an idea of the savings of the principal and interest that the board is working on. Woodbridge is probably the tougher of the deals. Its collateral is the building and all the equipment owned. The current mortgage at December 31 of 2012 is $2,480,000, but that $60,000 a year will go a long way in our operational savings. On McDonald Towers, that's MISTHA deal number 337, the fact where we're at with interest rates, that mortgage expires on October 1, 2016. So, we were soon going to hit a point where we had to do some refinancing. The capacity building that the board has done in the last few, in the last year has really positioned us well to deal, take advantage of some of the interest rate. We currently pay a mortgage of $10,877 a month, including interest, at 8.5 percent. And that was financed in 1989. At 8.5 percent in 1989 was a great interest rate. Again, to take that down to 3%, 3.5% will be substantial savings. We have a mortgage, our principal mortgage on that property is $1,035,868. There's a second mortgage on McDonald Towers for another $614,476. We pay no payments on the principal or the interest until October 1, 2016. So, there's some good timing happening and the board is positioned to take advantage of where we are at in this historically period of great interest rates. So, we'll also, the finance work at that property will include the renovation and the refinancing of these remaining mortgages. River Park Place, that's MISTHA Development number 510. The first mortgage was assumed by the nonprofit in 1989. We pay a mortgage payment of roughly $56,569 a month, including interest, at 7.93 percent. That mortgage is due January 2019. The, and the balance due at that point will be, our current balance due is $3,300,000. We also have a second mortgage there for $1.2 million, and that's similar to the other one I described, October 1. So, the timing on this financing is great. We've also done, working with the City and Energy Block Grant Program, we've done extensive energy audits. We have DTE and Consumers Energy, they were in the process again today. We're about to implement a lot of the low-hanging fruits, new lighting and others, but the refinancing, the renovation will also allow us to implement some of the more costly, capital-intensive improvements. Other things I just want to touch on, we talked about Hamilton Anderson. We are in the process of negotiating a lease with a private entity to operate the cooperative store. That will be in front of council at a later date. The lease agreement on that property is almost, I could clear, almost call it a tri-party agreement, the city, the nonprofit, and MISTHA are all parties to it. So, we're going to ask for council's consent to allow the subletting of a cooperative store. It's a fun opportunity to expand it beyond just the retail, where the entity will be providing a drop-off for pharmaceutical as well as possible dry cleaning. We're looking to expand the level of services for our residents there. And then, the final thing I wanted to touch on is there's been some discussion, most of you have been in different conferences, about land banking. And I want to pass out a sheet of property that kind of, we've highlighted which properties are owned by the nonprofit and which ones are owned by the parcel, by the city. And there's also a third party with the yellow and black line on it that we actually have a offer pending on Simmons Street. So, on Hooper and Simmons Street, you'll see that the city has been land banking in this particular neighborhood for a number of years, pretty much going back to the, I found, going back to the early '90s on these parcels. There's actually a large amount of property that's been assembled and that may be a future project for the Southfield Nonprofit to work jointly with the city on.
The final part of our update is that we, again, I'll call on Ms. Townsend, she'll come back up. The nonprofit is in negotiation now for a property manager. And again, we use our city purchasing agent to make sure that this was an open process and use Philip, Philip Reston, the councilman.
Certainly. Again, again, we went through a competitive process. For this one, because it's a specialized service, we did contact MISTHA to give us a list of qualified companies that could possibly respond to this. So, from that list, there were approximately 20, 25 companies that are in close proximity to this area, not that we necessarily limited it, but we definitely reached out to those companies. We definitely posted it to the website like we always do. Got 10 responses back. There was, I guess, ad hoc committee that was formed of the board members who reviewed all of these responses. And we identified a shortlist based on some pre-identified criteria that was in the bid documents. We conducted interviews prior to the bids being opened. There was a site visit, any company that was interested could come, talk to some of the board members, look at the facilities, do a, have a short tour. So, we went through that entire process. We identified two companies to further participate in the process. They were called in for interviews and I think one of the things the board was looking for was a good match personality-wise, which is why we recommended the face-to-face interview. From that process, the company was narrowed down to two.
Lockwood.
To Lockwood, okay. And that's kind of where we are in terms of negotiating the finer details of the contract.
We expect, right now, the contract for the property management company is with the attorney of the nonprofit attorney. And we expect it concludes that the negotiation shortly, March 1st, correct?
Yeah, we're, as council president said, we're moving towards the goal of March 1st. And I think it's important to say, this is about succession management. Our management company has been the nonprofit itself. This allows us to have a professional management company that can facilitate our succession management, take us through the refinancing, the renovation, as well as operating what's become daily, a very highly more regulated industry between HUD financing and MISTHA, dealing with their agencies of regulations. You almost need to move beyond a small family-type business to a professional property management to make sure that we can compete with other entities.
Okay. All right. Thank you both. There are a couple of questions. Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I just had a real quick one. This is actually very interesting information, so I appreciate the report. We were at a holiday party at McDonald's Tower in December and one of the residents asked us about Wi-Fi, or instead of having Wi-Fi in the building. And I don't know if that's part of the improvements or if there's, I think up there.
The answer is yes, and interesting. When you do your renovations and that today, you have to be Wi-Fi. Both HUD and MISTHA, it is now a requirement.
That's great. That's great. So, that's forthcoming and stuff.
As well as security, you know, we're looking at security, fobs, cameras, using digital technology to better protect our residents and reduce operating costs.
Okay, that'll go.
And the lighting is, we're changing the parking lights to LED lights. The hall lights are rather dim, so they'll be all new fixtures. Actually, less electricity.
And Mr. President, just today, Ray and I ran a phone, she's again helping us with another bid. And I can't say enough of the resources the city has helped with the nonprofit bringing in.
You're welcome.
Just assist with that process. Simply put, given the existing structure, the capacities are not there to facilitate these types of processes. So, it's great that we have this help.
I don't know, Mr. Berish, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you're fine.
Okay. I want to meet down the nonprofit story.
Before they begin.
Well, they were incorporated February 1st, 1973. I think he's one of your first.
I appreciate your many years of service and I know, I'm very glad that you're there and continue to serve. Next thing, I have Mayor Lawrence and then Mr. Fraser.
I have a question. Some of the properties are owned by the city and some by the housing corporation. Is there any need for us to turn our property over to the housing?
There would, for a future development, there may be. Obviously, I, you know, we're wearing two hats in this capacity. I would say, why do it until we know what's going to happen? The city's got some leverage.
Okay, okay. And then, the other question, I am so grateful that we're doing the upgrade, a long time coming, but is this going to have an impact on the monthly leases or rentals in those facilities?
No. We're pretty much governed by margin rents and how they can, our funding sources, the types of contracts that are in place dictate what types of rent increases we can have. And our rents are, we're probably about 90% of market where we're at right now, and we should stay there. The operating efficiencies will help us tremendously. Energy, it's estimated that we could save almost $400,000 a year between the three properties, the finance cost. All of those should be able to translate to us being able to offer a better product and safeguard rent increases for our residents for as long as possible. It's not going to do anything that immediately bumps the rent up. They'll have the benefit of this savings for a number of years.
We talk a lot about Southfield Standard and this is really about making these units more attractive and just, there's, some of them are very tired. They need, they need work, so it's, and the money is in the reserve fund for years, so our, the board's intention is not to spend all of it, but to spend what's needed to make those upgrades. Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, there are a couple, a few parcels of property that nobody, that are still rightfully owned. And I know the one on Hooper Street was pretty reluctant to sell for over years and years. Has any activity been recent to contact them, find out they're interested in selling or?
I've not initiated any activity. Candidly, I'd like to see the board get through this refinancing of these projects and then maybe take a look at this property, but maybe approach. The house on Simmons that's on the market, we originally made an offer as a short sale well over a year ago, and we've been watching it and finally Freddie Mac listed it. I know a couple of the properties are rental, but we've been real informal. This is going to be one of the challenges on this. Obviously, I would rather always have a friendly transaction versus an amendment domain. But at a certain point in the future, the board may want to wrestle with that, maybe knock on a few doors and see if there's an interest.
Yeah, right now, it's a place pretty full.
Yeah. Okay, the second thing is, McDonald Towers especially, and River Park Place, but mostly McDonald Towers, it is my guesstimate that when it was built, the forecast of how many parking spaces were required were different than they are today, because I think probably back in those days, there was one car per family. And I'm sure that there are a lot of two-car families or people that lived in those apartments. When I used to go over there for AARP meetings, there was always a complaint that, you know, you guys coming from the outside take up parking places, we come, come in, there's no place for parking. And is there anything in the works, because we have land bank, is there any, anything in the works to increase the size of parking?
Certainly an option. It's not been discussed, this is the first time hearing, hearing that, but it could certainly be evaluated. We'll work with the planning department and standards and with, the properties have phenomenal occupancy, we're always above 97% occupancy. We could probably literally survey our residents and do a car count, make sure we have adequate spaces, and we can look into that.
Well, the reason behind that whole thing is, that's not just for the residents. That's, you know, that's senior center and you expect people from other places to come there.
The present mortgage documents have a requirement that there'll be a senior center there. I think that's something that both parties in the future and on refinancing, it needs to be evaluated. We know that that's an issue for parks and rent, and there's been some discussion, but as we refinance, those mortgage covenants will, should be evaluated. It says that the city of Southfield shall operate a senior center there. The lease and the covenant agreements do not define the level of service, but as the city goes through our economic challenges, we may need to evaluate that.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Jordan?
Sure. The professional management company that you were looking at, is that going to be a long-term contract or is it going to be five years, 10 years versus permanent?
The, we've talked between three and five years for the initial contract, that it can be extended, and the nonprofit board will be then executing that contract with the management company.
And while they're there, they're going to closely monitor younger individuals that live there, because I remember once when I was over there a few times, many of the residents complained that there were younger people that were moving into some of the units. So, is that going to be monitored to make sure that you ask them for?
It will be monitored within the regulations of the funding sources. Some of these programs have taken the age 55 as being senior. And when you have someone who's perhaps 72 and a 55-year-old, there's a generational in some, like, you know, one, one person grew up in a different era where certain things are permitted. You're touching on probably one of the hottest topics in senior communities today with your statement, is that generational issue between who's a senior, 55 or 70.
Okay, but I, I think it was even younger than 55.
But, but know this, I mean, our management company, the dialogue has been zero tolerance. And we, you know, what relative to illegal activity, drug abuse, and pretty much all of the funding programs, the refinancing we're looking at is HUD financing, and all of their properties are zero tolerant communities.
Because that's really important, because if you're supposed to be there, fine, but if not, we should not allow.
And that's where the security will help in, because a lot of times the issues are guests and such that, or maybe they're just visiting an aunt or grandma or, and they're the ones who are causing those issues.
I'm glad to see that the grocery store will be expanded and will bring more enhancement to that area that was going to be, now, as it relates to the land bank property that we're securing now, what's the goal? What's the plan? What are we looking at?
Well, the nonprofit board has discussed, I think, I've heard everything from different housing programs to a senior center. I mean, there's been a lot of things discussed. Obviously, you know, the current housing crisis we're dealing with are going to have some impact. One board member has discussed some of the housing activities going on in Ann Arbor, that, you know, after we get through our plate, the aggressive activities in the next 12 to 18 months, that perhaps we should be looking at other communities and some of the types of housing. There's the concept of scattered site senior housing presented in a villa. There's lots of ideas floating around and I can tell you with the composition of the current board, a lot of creativity and a lot of thought. The board that you folks have appointed, the five housing commissioners, all have a lot of different life experiences. Larry Tisdale is in the profession, he's a professional property owner and manager. Rita Hillman with her background in Fannie Mae and the Opportunity Fund from Cooperative Housing, very familiar with all types of different models. You know, putting back on the city side, there are some of us who are discussing doing some type of analysis relative to housing market opportunities. The city planner, council president, we've had some conversations about a MISTHA grant to do a better study in our, of our housing market and housing opportunities. And one of the things that might help us identify specialty projects that perhaps the Southfield Nonprofit or another nonprofit entity could undertake on our behalf.
Okay, I know this is a long time coming. I know Council President is on the committee now, but many of us have served and we have all said, echo the same thing, that we have to give. but many of us are disturbed, and we've all said, echo the same thing, that we have to give some attention to, to these properties. And this is actually happening now. I just wish my other colleagues were here, because they've also said the same thing, you've got to give attention. And if we could somewhat, some way communicate this to them, and I know they're not here, but they've all been passionate.
I have spoken to everyone about this.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Lauren?
I just want to echo what Tom's going to do just now. When I sat on the board, you know, we looked at this land, and we were actively in acquisition. And the, this city needs a senior community center. And to be able to do a collaboration between the city and the nonprofits to build a state of the art. We talked about this, we even had one time when the, when the YAP, and they were talking about a youth center, possibly building them both together because they have the property. So I, that's something that I really, you know, when we get to that point, I know you got to get through this, but building of a senior village with independent housing, and they have those, and some communities that are fabulous, or a, that community, we need a state-of-the-art senior community center, just like we put all our efforts in our youth center, because that is now, as you know, becoming the majority of our population in Southfield, fifty-five and older. So we really need to put some emphasis on that.
I'm not in that number range.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to second item on our agenda, the Parks and Rec security camera purchase and authorization to accept the risk of urgent program grant that goes along with this from the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. And we have Mr. Tom Vargo here, the regional town representative of Q Star Technology, which is a system for crime prevention, it's an initiative to, actually for avoidance of, or prevent, prevention of nuisance crimes such as vandalism, graffiti, trespassing in our parks. We have a commitment to the people in the city, as well as the taxpayers in terms of avoiding property damage. I felt that a show and tell is the best way to understand the system, so Mr. Vargo, could you step forward? And we have also representatives of Parks and Recreation.
I just want to get up here and talk a little bit while Tom's getting set up. What we're looking at is, is seven cameras to start out. The parks that, that we're targeting are Ingle Nook, Stratford Woods, Bedford Woods, Pebble Creek, Sims Park, and Miller Park. These are parks that we've had the most issues with vandalism and graffiti. Since, you know, I'm the Parks and Operations Supervisor, it's our department that has to do all the graffiti cleanup. So I'm very excited about this product that you're going to see today, because it is truly avoidance and crime prevention rather than just catching people, you know, in the act. The system has a track record of eighty-five to a hundred percent success rate in keeping crime from happening in the areas where they've used it. So Tom Vargo is here from Q Star, the county's brought, one of the flash cams with him.
Mr. Vargo, if you could give us your business address for the camera?
Sure, absolutely.
Did you want to put it up here?
The, yeah, my, well, again, my name is Tom Vargo, and I'm at Q Star. My business address is seventy-seven fifty-one Rynek Drive, and that's W R Y N E C K, and that's Deloitte, Ohio, four B O one seven. Q Star is actually headquartered out of Torrance, California. It is a, it's a veteran-owned company, and this equipment is manufactured in America right in Torrance. Again, thank you very much for having me here today. And what I'm going to do first with the flash cam, this is called the flash cam. And I'm going to go ahead and activate it so you can see it.
Thank you for visiting Ingle Nook Park. The park is now closed. City of Southfield parks are open from dawn till dusk.
The, this is, this is the unit. It's, it's, the unit is fully self-contained. It's, it's made out of sixteen-gauge steel, it's solar charged, battery powered, it's motion-activated. And as you can see, what makes us unique and nothing else like it is we do have a voice built in that's fully customizable. That's, that's a sample message, that can be changed by anyone to affect, you know, to have the effect they would like to have with the system. The system is typically, it's typically installed, I'm going to, I'm going to just move through this a little bit quickly so I can get to the pictures, because...
We had the package that you provided.
Oh, you did, great, okay. Okay, outstanding. This is, typically the system is installed approximately fifteen to eighteen feet near, so it, so the system itself can avoid being vandalized. We, a lot of times, we even have the system mounted on, on a light pole using just simple danding materials. We even had Parks and Rec organizations actually grease the poles so the kids can't get up there and vandalize it. It actually works very, works very well. Actually, it works even better when you paint it, when you paint the axle grease the same color as the pole. But the intent, the intent of this system is, is like we said, we, we want to be proactive in assisting your community and trying to prevent kids from doing what they're going to do, or whoever, whoever's doing these types of issues. And in addition, in addition to the voice being customizable, the voice can be turned off. So we're, we're very flexible in the way that we can go about approaching the issues that the parks folks see and they're, what they're dealing with. But one of the other benefits that we offer is we've got a sixteen-megapixel camera built into the system. It's a still image, we take still images. What the, what the benefit of that is, is you get crisp, clear images. They're in the form of a JPEG, and the chain of custody is, is perfect so it can be passed on to the police department for investigation. What you'll see is with the voice, you'll see this, this gentleman here who's headed into a construction site, he's going to cut open a chain-linked fence and do some damage and steal some equipment. He looks up at the flash cam, so we've got a perfect, perfect facial image. And then what happens is, he leaves. That's, that's deterrence, that's what we want. We want, we want to change the mindset of these folks before they do what they do. Now, this is, I love this picture. It says, you can see over here, this is in Kentucky, thousand dollars for dumping, illegal dumping. And, and we've got, we've got that license plate there. We can, this system, because of the way it's constructed, we can actually capture a license plate out to two-hundred-and-fifty feet.
In the dark?
In the dark. System is, you probably saw the flash, and I apologize to council for not warning you about the flash there. But I figured the pictures would, that originally were taken earlier today, warning you of that. But the, but the flash, we operate twenty-four seven, and the, and the nut, what the white, the white flash does at night is, even, even an image in a JPEG that looks like you've got nothing there, if you, if you adjust the tint and the brightness and some of the parameters that you can, that you can in the, in the city system, you can, you can actually see the face, so it's really neat. This is, I'm from Columbus, Ohio, and I just want to mention that my daughter dates a gentleman whose father played for the University of Michigan from seventy-nine to eighty-three, so don't hold that, don't hold that against me. But this is actually Columbus, and we, illegal dumping, so we were able to zoom in on the license plate. And, and it's, it's amazing to see people's reaction when they, when you say, you know, "We'd like to talk to you about, you know, some dumping," and they say, "We don't know what you're talking about." Is that you? Can I change my statement? There's the, there's the license plates at night, as I said, out to two-hundred-and-fifty feet. What we do with the system is we speed up the lens so that we're just capturing that enough light to get the image of the license plate. The, the city of St. Louis, they're a very, they're, they're an interesting city. The mayor decided that their broken window, and the broken window theory was illegal dumping. And, and what, what they found was, these are, these are some of the types of issues that they found when they, when they installed these systems for illegal dumping. They, you see the guy's brandishing a firearm, all three of those guys went to prison. Graffiti, you can see the kid, hears the, hears the voice, looks, he's got the spray can in his hand. This is, this is a good one, I, I think you did. This, this one, the Parks and Rec, or the, excuse me, this city, it's, it's in Utah. They couldn't figure out why the flash cam had images, but there was no graffiti. They went, they went further through the system, and they found this guy figured out he, his images was being taken. He came back with white paint and painted over graffiti. So they had to dig through it, because you can see there's graffiti here.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, that, yep. This is some metal theft, this is, this is amazing. This, this gentleman worked for this electric company, and he called his wife and said, "I got a load of copper for you." So they brought, they brought their kid, they got a, you can see they got a handicap sticker there. They brought their child with them, and you, and when you actually zoom in on the JPEG, you can see her face. They unload all the copper onto this truck and drive away. It's more internal theft in Los Angeles. This is a zoo in Springfield, Missouri, where they were, they were having their pot machines destroyed like every week. I think this perfectly illustrates, you know, preventative, proactive, the types of things we're trying to do is, this was trespassing into a water department in Valencia, California. So the, the kids are going in there to party, that the flash cam goes off, they, they see it go off, and then they turn around and leave. So, again, the, just, just some other unique features. The, the system can actually, there's a, there's a delay that we can use, that the parks can decide to use. We can either delay the system from activating either twenty or sixty seconds, which if you've got, if you've got areas where you have graffiti, you can actually catch it in the act. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I think this is great, actually, but my question is, what's to prevent an animal, squirrel, from setting this off all night long in the neighborhood and have, you know, flashing and voice activation just because an animal is chewing up something and...
No, that's, that's a great question. No, that, it, it is, it is motion-activated, so, so you will get wildlife setting off. But what, you know, with, with these gentlemen's help, what we'll be doing is evaluating our hotspots. If the hotspot is near a neighborhood, we're clearly going to adjust the volume and the message based on the area we're putting it in. And the system, the system comes with a, with a wireless server built in, it's a point-to-point connection. So what parks will do is, they'll go view these images on a thumbnail on their laptop. And if you have an occasional picture of a squirrel or a deer or whatever, it, it takes a couple seconds to wipe that out.
Plus, I believe the, the voice and the flash would scare away the animals, just like it would the perpetrator, so... Well, we can adjust it to each condition.
Mayor Lauren?
This is a sole, sole source vendor act purchase? Does anyone else provide this, this product?
Not like this, no.
This has unique features that we were unable to find in any other...
And I did a lot of searching, I could not find anybody else that made anything like this.
My other question is, you said that you would use a thumb drive. Is that the, you can't do electronic... How do we view the pictures?
How do you view the pictures? The, the system is key fella operated, so, so the, we will put the system into download mode, and the, and the images will be downloaded onto the laptop in Parks and Recs.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yep.
And the message can be customized?
Yes, ma'am, whatever you want.
In Ingle Nook, do you envision more than one location?
Yes.
How many will we need?
We're going to start with two.
We're going to start with two at Ingle Nook.
Start with two? I would hope that with installation of this, we have long talked about having, selling our own ice cream to all those trucks out there. And it's always been a pushback on possible storage of product and, and that facility that with these installed, that we can revisit that?
Sure.
And start making our own revenue instead of empowering these independents that come there. I think it's great. I'm concerned about the parks that are bugged to residential, but in Ingle Nook, you do have the condos on the side. So I don't know what the radius is for the, for the sound.
And there is flexibility, you know, other parks we could add potentially to Ingle Nook, depending on what we get feedback through the system. And that's the beauty of the system is the flexibility. Part of the consulting fee that's layered into this, Tom will show Park Services folks through Bob how to mount them on the poles, and if there isn't a lot of activity, they have a certain park, then we can add one to Ingle Nook, or it's kind of mix and match depending on what the needs are.
And are we going to have signage saying you are being, you are under surveillance?
We can do that.
Yeah.
I think that's a big deterrent, even, I know the flash and light is, but when you have that there and saying you are, you know, entering to this park after closing hours, you are under surveillance or something. I think adds to that deterrent. Thank you.
That's a good point.
Yes, what is the field of vision on, on this camera? Because it's, because it's a stationary camera.
Great, it's ninety-five feet by a hundred feet.
Ninety-five by a hundred?
Yes.
And to the, how do you figure out which way you aim the camera? Because in a lot of our parks, there's different entrances, there's different activities, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's why we included in, in the bid was the consultation from the company to help us, you know, situate the cameras in the best possible location.
Okay, what about five, take the pictures in, when it's foggy?
We, well, it, are you talking about the lens fogging up or when there's fog? No, we likely would get the same pictures that, that, that anyone would in fog, so we probably wouldn't, it wouldn't be affected in fog. Do you have a lot of foggy days in Detroit or...
It depends.
Okay.
We have everything.
Yeah, you stay here a few minutes.
One week, we have everything.
Just stay there and see.
Right, right.
And how often do, how often can photos be taken? How, the recycling of the camera?
We can take, once the system's activated, we take a, we can take up to four images every five seconds. So, and then, and then it takes two minutes to recycle.
Okay. Let's assume that someone is in the park and doesn't leave. So you can take four pictures and then, then it recycles and... Because everyone, well, once they know that it's just a camera, they're liable to say, you know, "I'm here now, I have my picture taken, I might as well do what I came to do and then leave."
Right.
Especially if they're not tagging or, or some, you know, if they're just running around or... And for the Parks and Rec folks, one of the parks that's not on the list is Carpenter Lake. Have you considered putting something in Carpenter Lake? Or don't we have a problem there at this time?
Not, we've had some, but very limited compared to the other parks. So, you know, we can always expand on the system, but these are the ones that, that needed the most attention at this time.
This is really a trial, correct? I mean, starting with this?
Yes, this is based upon a meeting we had about a year ago from different residents contacting us. And this is our initial attempt, again, like Tom said, to be proactive. But the beauty of the system is, if there's not activity, let's say Stratford Woods, we can move that camera to another location.
Because they're not hardwired in, they're... Because they're not hardwired in, they're just standing all new and they're...
With that being said, this is how portable the system is. This quick moving daffodil, we call it, can be either lagged or strapped onto the poles that I showed you in the presentation, and then the system attaches like this from the back. So, I don't want to draw, I don't want to ruin anything else in this material here, but I'm gonna... So it would be angled down like that. So once you've cleared an area, or once Parks has cleared an area, or let's say we need to make some adjustments, as you mentioned, on the field of vision, it literally takes, you know, 10 minutes to put this in a different area. And that's the beauty of the system, because it's fully self-contained, they're completely portable.
And it's solar powered?
And it's solar, it's battery, yeah. Solar powered, yeah, solar powered battery, solar charged battery powered. There's a 30 volt battery in here.
Now, in all of the parks that we've identified, are there devices, poles, trees, whatever, in everyone that are tall enough to mount this?
Yes, yeah.
In an area that would, yeah, that would cover the area that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so. All right. Ms. Jordan?
What's the life expectancy of each unit?
I would, that's a great question. The system includes a one-year warranty. We've had systems, the company's been in business for 15 years, we've had systems out there for 10 years.
So the technology hasn't changed?
I mean, the technology changes, it does change. We offer a 50% credit if the technology changes enough that it warrants that the organization upgrade, and that lasts for the life of the product.
But the average expectancy now would be 10 years?
I would say 10 years, yeah.
Thank you.
And what's the reporting back like? So let's say, you know, it's not necessarily an act of vandalism, but there's trespassing or, you know, somebody's doing something that doesn't necessarily need cleanup the next day, but they shouldn't be in that hour, you know, at the park at that hour and it's a repeated thing. Do you get a notice that says there's an abnormal amount of pictures last night, or do you have to look through it every morning to determine what's going on?
You'd have to go and download.
Yeah, currently you have to go and download, and typically, typically you set yourself up on a schedule of once a week or once every two weeks. The system, as it sits right now, if we only took night pictures, pulled 15,000 pictures, daytime pictures, 750, and that's due to compression. So, yeah, they're gonna have to routinely...
All right. We have immediate need to act on this, and I need to clarify with this board. Are we taking this separately, the grant and in the authorization of the purchase?
No, I think those are two separate items.
Okay, so it would be two rule 10s, then?
I'm the rule 10.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Moss, the board member, Mr. Fraser, for immediate need to act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I need a motion on the acceptance of the grant that's gonna help pay for this.
I'm the support.
Moved by Moss and Fraser, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we need immediate need to act for the purchase of the security cameras.
I'm the support.
Moved by Moss and Fraser, all those in favor?
May I ask a question?
We're on the rule 10 right now.
That's what I want to ask the question about. Why are we having to do this? Why do we have immediate need to act?
Through the chair, we would like to get this system in by the spring, and we're hoping the spring will arrive. And so we want to get the training done and get all ready.
That's advanced, though, some training.
That's why I wanted to know. Anyhow, we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we need a motion for the purchase.
I'm the support.
All right. It's been moved by Moss and Fraser once again for purchase of the security cameras.
Should we clarify that by saying that the remaining portion of the purchase fee should come from account 208-551-5101-49740?
I think that would be acceptable.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think your motion's...
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chair, if I could, just for a moment. I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec staff for their work on this, and also for the effort that it took to get the grant funding. The grant funding covers 50% of the total cost. Total cost is $41,492 for the system, so appreciate the efforts.
I have a question. In the event that this camera system captures someone in an act that ends up in the court and there's a fine, does the money go back to Parks and Rec too? I'll set the topic.
Well, it would if it was vandalism, that we need restitution. Yes, the court order restitution.
Restitution would go back.
Absolutely, but the photos alone, you wouldn't get the money back on a fine.
And the police department is also gonna have the software and the fob so that if that was a request by the chief, that they have the ability to go and download pictures in the middle of the night if they needed to do so, so...
We've worked cooperatively with the police department, so through the chief, and initially with Detective Snook.
All right. We have a number of other items.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is the Eight Mile Road Resurfacing, which is in our conference.
Good evening. I'm here because we have a couple contract documents from MDOT. They are going to be doing a resurfacing project on Eight Mile Road this summer, and this will be between Telegraph Road and Southfield Freeway. There will also be a bridge replacement project, bridge replacement over the Plum Creek, which is just west of Berg Road. And the project will include ADA upgrades at all the signalized intersections, so ramps and push buttons. Should be noted that this bridge, one of the contracts is for procurement of the carbon fiber that they'll be using. This is the same carbon fiber technology that we used on our Bridge Street Bridge project. So, nice to see that again in Southfield. So, the project is expected to start this April 2013 with completion November 15, 2013.
This item is detailed in your package and obviously with the Southfield share of $36,001,000. And Michelle, this is really identical to what we approved last year from Telegraph to...
To our West City limits, correct. Same type of project, but just including a bridge replacement.
We are gonna put this on the consent agenda for February 25th, unless there are any other questions, Mr. Fraser?
I do have a question. When we have these multi-party contracts, how do the costs get allocated? I know we have our part of it, $600,000, and the federal government has $9 million, and the state has some money in it. Do they just, do they do it by percentages when it comes time to pay the bills? Or do they, once we donate our money, it's all gone, they use it all up? The reason I say that, suppose if the project comes in under budget?
Right.
How do...
We are billed our percentage based on the construction cost. So if it comes in below budget, then we would be billed a little less benefit if it come in right on their anticipated budget.
So nothing is paid in bill, it's all over with?
There are progress payments as construction progresses. So we get the bills directly from MDOT. MDOT pays the contractor and we reimburse for our share.
And it's on a percentage basis all the way through the project?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, they could, you know, eat our money all up and take their money back to the bank?
Yeah. No, it doesn't work that way.
Okay, good. If you have any question ahead?
Then I'm gonna move this item to the conference for February. Moving on, Ms. Carlin, we have support for the Oakland County Trails Water and Land Alliance. Good evening.
Good evening. Oakland County Planning has, they have working groups. One of the groups is for natural areas and trails and non-motorized improvements within the county. We meet quarterly and it's, they present different topics and different projects that are going on in the county. This is a new group that's combined the trails group and the natural areas group. I happen to go to both of those, and Terry's been attending some meetings as well. So we would like to, they have developed a new letterhead, and they would like to do grants for the projects that might be in the county for green infrastructure, that might be a land acquisition, a trail project, even a park development, a non-motorized trail, anything that the communities in the county might be trying to build or acquire and seeking grant funding. So this would be a letterhead, and we would add our name to the side as a letterhead, and that would indicate to usually the state or federal granting agencies that there's some regional management cooperation and planning that's going on, you know, without being mandated from higher levels, and indicate support for the project without just saying the Trails Water and Land Alliance, and that would kind of explain who that is. So this is like a, kind of a charter-type group as far as this, so we don't have everybody who's participating yet, but so far Bingham Farms, West Bloomfield, Novi, Rochester Hills, Waterford, Masson Heights, those are some of the other communities that are signing on at this time, and it's a good group of people. Any project would be vetted through the group and discussed before they would award it for a, send a letter of support. So it would benefit us potentially for some of our future grant applications.
Is there any discussion on this? Otherwise, I believe it's, I think, nine minutes. We will move this to February 25th for formal action.
Great.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carlin.
Thank you.
We have the fire department next, correct?
Yes.
Authorization to solicit bids for replacement life support units, Chief Rollins?
While the chief is approaching, just briefly, this replacement was first advocated in the budget process. We want some more homework done as to the timing, because there are some safety improvements that were scheduled for 2013, we wanted to analyze those, as well as price and some other features. It's ready to go right now, it's the right thing to do at the right price at the right time. So with that, we're asking for this permission to shop, which is to go out for bids. Our process is that if an item is not approved in the budget process, there's an additional step that we have to go through, and that's to get permission to solicit bids, so that's what this is about. It's from the Equipment Replacement Fund, and the amount is $700,000, which we intend that these vehicles will come in less than that. During this period, we've established a collaborative purchase with Independence Township that is going out for similar equipment. So with that, if there are any questions for the chief, but the repair costs indicate that this is the proper time. These vehicles range in miles, these are hard-driven miles, 132,200 to 168,075. So it's time to replace them. It takes eight months to build these vehicles, and the anticipated life expectancy was four years. It'll be seven by the time that they get replaced, so we've done our due diligence to utilize these to the fullest. With that, are there questions for the chief? The chief's the expert.
Ms. Lawrence?
It's not so much a question. I just want to say, our chief has just selected, and we have all said how happy we are. We see some glaring examples of communities who don't have their finger on the pulse of the equipment that's needed to take care of their employees. I think tonight, the fact that we have the funds in our revolving fund, we have a chief that can analyze our equipment, make sure that we have the pop equipment operating, and to plan so that we can have, continue to have the expectation that we will have pop night, emergency service. And it's just good to sit at this table and to have this conversation. I just want to say, chief, you know, I already told you, I'm glad you're here, and to this council and to the city, we are doing so many things right, and it's good to have this conversation, and while I don't get a vote, I get a voice, I am very happy to...
Thank you.
This is, we're gonna advance this to the 25th, correct?
Correct, correct.
Is there any other comment on this? If not, thank you, chief.
I'll do the...
All right. Number six is the authorization to solicit bids for demolition and site restoration of 17017 West Eight Mile Road, the former Ramada Inn. And I believe Mr. Dorn, Mr. McNair?
Congratulations, Freddie.
Whether you want it or not.
Mr. President, city council members, we're simply requesting authorization to solicit bids for demolition. We are nearing the process of the bid specification writing, and we are hoping that to place this on the consent agenda item for the 25th, and at which...
Rule 10.
We're asking for, is that, all right, we're asking for a rule 10, I apologize. And we simply want to get the bids out as quickly as possible. They should be ready in the next two weeks.
The rate goes something about the process, or are we outside of the process?
Well, we initially decided to do an RFQ, to do an initial screening for demolition contractors, and from there, the firm that selected, we will actually negotiate the demolition of the structure. Right? I actually, I thought you were...
Didn't mean to catch you off guard. The reason we are asking for the rule 10 is because we hope to have the specifications, the technical specifications, ready at the end of the month to distribute. What we're doing at this time is pre-qualifying the companies. So tomorrow morning, with council's permission, I will post a document that will allow companies to submit to us their qualifications. The engineering firm will help evaluate that along with the building department, and those companies that meet the criteria, because we expect this to be a high-profile demolition, only those companies will be allowed to submit pricing to us. So that's why we were asking for, and we need to act this evening.
All right. I have Mr. Moss first.
Yeah, I'd ask this, I think Fred and I talked about this, and L. Seven and I talked about this, because it's such a high-profile, large demolition, were we contacting, is a serious question, any of the movie studios who are looking for B-roll of a large-scale demolition in order to put some of the cost, and, you know, we wouldn't have to eat all the money to take this down, or, you know, just continue to build on to this pot of how we get this building down?
Through the chair, we have two folks that are out there. This is a redevelopment project, as well as a sophisticated purchasing situation, but don't we have a grant in the middle of all this?
We have a grant, and we also have a brownfield plan that's being prepared for the site. There was a call placed in the Michigan Film Office back in December. I was going back, I made the call prior to going on vacation, and I don't think I ever got a call back. But here's what I will do. Ms. Freeman is with our, coordinates with our film office, she and I will talk, I'll also speak... I'll also speak to our lobbyist about it. We are waiting to hear from a grant, the original grant. We, council authorized this in the middle in December. We requested 1.2 million from the State Department of Human Services. Original date we were supposed to hear was February 12th. We're now hearing February 15th is the new D-Day. But we will talk to the film office again, but I'm going to probably go through our lobbyists to make sure we get a call back. And then we are working on the brownfield plan. So we've been focused on ramping up the demo specs and we, this morning, we just did our first review of the brownfield plan.
I, no, I appreciate all your work in making sure that this doesn't have to put the large portion of it, you know, just let us know the date. I want to be on site and watch this all happen. Not in the building, off. Not on site, off site.
You know, that's going to be a challenging project with some of the logistics. Nine Mile is scheduled to be resurfaced from Greenfield to Southfield and we're actually trying to figure out how we will truck the garbage out. We thought we had a route, but there's concerns about whether Northwestern Highway can handle some of the weight limits and, but it's one, it's like the final detail we have to figure out and the fact that the road is to be reconstructed from June to July 15th. I don't want to delay that project either because folks Providence and OCC have been hammering us to get that done.
Mayor Rollins?
Are we imploding how we-
That will be determined by the demolition contractor. The, the first step will be the asbestos and the environmental remediation. At that point, the demo contractor, we've been somewhat handicapped and we've not been able to find the full construction drawings. So we've had the engineering companies going in and basically rewriting how this building was constructed. And the scrap values will determine whether or not they imploded or taken earlier by flare. The bid documents speak to noise, dust control, vibration. A lot of attention's been paid to the reengineering of the soil on the site so that we can immediately go in and rebuild. We have two parties, three parties who have expressed an interest in the site. So we want a site and a pad that can be rebuilt without having to wait for a couple of years for it to settle.
I just want to say I'm very glad this has been a I-SOR for our community. For the DDA, it's just been a sign of life that has really doubled, doubled our image and so I'm, I'm very happy that we are moving forward and thank you for your work.
We may do the demolition and change the cost. We can recoup, recoup money that, that's in the building that can be recycled.
Well, when you do a job like that, the, the price usually includes the scrap value. The scrap value should reduce the cost for this. For the purposes of the grant, we had probably one of the largest demolition contractors in Detroit, in southeastern Michigan come in and take a look at the property to give us our cost estimate. But Mr. Shred, I believe, has shared with council members articles in the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal where scrap values are so great that it's almost paying for demolition costs.
Mr. Frager?
Okay, when you talk about scrap value, is the demolition company, do they get the scrap, do they get the scrap value?
Yeah.
But it's taken, but it's, it's all part of the bid?
It's all part of the bid.
So-
They, they're making estimates.
Yeah. It's, you know, a million, $500,000 with $750,000 of scrap value therefore.
It's almost like a credit in the price, but we just get the one price.
Okay, now, how many acres is this?
Five, just under five acres.
Just under five acres, so we don't have to do a community impact study on that one? I think that's 10 acres.
10, 10 is what our ordinance says.
Okay. And do we, are we planning to put in the contract that it has to be down by a certain date?
As we finalize, the answer to that is yes. We need a company, that'll be part of this, of this selection process, to find a company large enough that can take down a property of this, this site as quickly as possible. We've discussed, we're right across from a major media outlet. I don't have to say it, we're ground zero for every media outlet in Southfield. We have a hospital, a college, we have a lot of things that we want this thing down as quickly as possible.
Okay, so how quickly we need it down will almost determine how it comes down. Thank you.
All right. We need a Rule 10 on that. A motion for Rule 10. We have, it's been moved for Rule 10 by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Frager. All those in favor?
Aye.
I want to carry. All right, then we need a, a motion to authorize the solicit bid.
The demolition and site restoration of a former-
Okay, moved by Ms. Jordan and supported by Mr. Frager. Before we vote, I'm going to say I'm reluctantly supporting this because I'd like to see what the demolition comes in at. One part of me says I hope it's so high that some serious thought will be given to rehabbing this building and finding an alternative use for it. I just philosophically, I'm very, I don't like the I-SOR, but I philosophically, I'm very opposed to just throw everything away. And I still would hope that there might be somebody who could come along and take some vision for either senior housing or something. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
I want you to know how much it hurts me to support a Rule 10. I don't have one coming out, so.
Next, we're going to move on to the rubbish contract?
Yes, this is a contract extension with Waste Management of Michigan Inc., located in Southfield, Michigan, for a three-year period, July 1, 2013, June 30, 2016, for rubbish collection and disposal, composting and recycling services. The current five-year contract with Waste Management for the period ends June 30, 2013. The contract provides that it may be extended for an additional three-year period upon mutual agreement of the parties. In order properly, plan ahead, the finance committee reviewed this at length. I had several meetings to discuss the contract. We reviewed the service levels. We have a long-term relationship with this company, but we, whenever we, before we extend a contract, we always do a market review and a service level and pricing review to make sure that ongoing is still a beneficial relationship to the city and its residents. We reviewed the service levels, the departments that are involved, the public works and pro-enforcement. We found that the complaints are very rare and have been promptly and courteously handled by Waste Management personnel. Their, the company's response to emergency situations such as a storm damage cleanup, move outs and other special circumstances has been prompt and thorough. Waste Management's location within the city of Southfield is a plus in this regard. We believe that the company has been a true proven partner in maintaining the curb appeal and overall appearance of the city. As to pricing, the finance committee conducted a rigorous review of the current pricing and we were able to negotiate the recommended three-year extension, which we believe will assist our residents in coping with this continuing economic challenge or what I call a fragile, a fragile regional economic recovery. This contract extension calls for a 3% decrease in the current annual fee. The current annual fee is $186.16 and so what we have negotiated with the company, keeping in mind the long-term relationship and other benefits as well as the service levels, that we've negotiated a 3% decrease in year one. Year two will have a modest increase of 1% and year three allows for adjustment on, based on inflation, but capped at 2%. Thus, at no time during the three-year term of this contract extension will our homeowners experience an increase over the current annual fee. This current fee breaks down to about $3.60 a week or $0.51 a day for the full range of services provided and, which have been provided and will continue during this three-year extension period. As indicated, the finance committee unanimously endorsed this recommendation. We will be coming back to council on February 25th for a formal consideration of approval. And with that introduction, we'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have representatives here from Waste Management.
Ms. Jordan, you were in the financials.
Sure, and I have to echo what Mr. Shred said in terms of the financial community really giving us the, the workout with companies talking about the female. And we believe that the current provided other state mills, it's best for our residents and we're not willing this time, we don't want to be capable of, at this time, to change, to change our services. So we're very pleased that we agreed to and look forward to getting the outcome.
Gentlemen, I don't know if you have something you'd like to add? Looks like we certainly have to- Come up to the firm and give your name and address at the record, please.
House Counsel President Manish, Brian Conaway, Waste Management, 19200, West Eight Mile. And certainly ask for your support to continue the relationship, partnership that we have pursued in Southfield for a number of years. Now, we really believe that the service levels that occur at the curb, they're huge. We believe that our guys do a great job. You know, many years ago, when the city used to have the cleanups where you had the annual cleanup, it was a lot of dollars that the city spent. Well, that year too went to the curb and Waste Management continued to service that. We've been able to respond as Mr. Shred has just talked about in the letter, that there has been storm damage, there have been things that occurred with huge winds that have happened. And we've had the resources to put out at the curb to, to service the city of Southfield. We've taken pride in that and we hope to continue the partnership that we have with it.
Is there any specific questions? Sam Caremagnow, 19,200, Eight Mile Road. I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. This contract doesn't, it does not address an upgrade of the recycling purpose, correct?
It does not address a larger container or automated system. You're still free to put out as much recycling as you'd like in your 18-gallon bin or if you'd like to put it into a 32-gallon trash can with a decal on it, that will provide, you're free to put out as much recycling as you'd like.
Okay. When you were last here, and I know we discussed it about changing the recycling to larger bins, so that would be another presentation that you made. It's not included in this. I just want to be clear about that.
Now, this, this, this extension is exactly what you see, what you, what you have now. Your current service is continued.
All right, yes.
Yes, the previous council president speaking of was a longer-term offering, a nine or 10-year proposal.
Well, I know you did some pencil sharpening and that's why I'm asking today. I know last time we talked, we were still interested in pursuing that and I know that we have communicated to you the state of our finances and we do appreciate the lowering of the, of the fees. And I understand that comes with the cost as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
One, one item that was very important to realize is that this company is resident of the legal sector and they hit taxes here in the middle of the year. And that's very, very important. We did look at that in the middle of the administration.
Thank you.
I do think that one, there's one thing important and Jim touched on it, but I'd like to amplify it a little bit, and that is, at the end of the three years, the residents are going to be paying less than they are today for, for-
Same service, yes.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rollins?
I, I just want to ask, the mayor's office, we get the complaints and a number of times that I can talk about where, between my office and the city administrator's office, you have been very responsive. And I want Waste Management to know that that partnership has meant a lot. I don't expect anything else but that to continue. But it's been really good when a, a person has been put out or someone just decides to empty out a whole garage in the middle of the weekend. It's a holiday weekend and the neighbors are screaming. That between myself calling, you know, and we have great relationships. And I, I brought this up before. It's one thing for you, the big shot, you don't drive the truck.
Not anymore.
You don't do that. You come and you offer us something, but it's the people on the ground that I can tell you, you should be proud of because they are very responsive. If they don't get it right, I know sometimes Councilwoman Jordan talked about how you put the, the cans afterwards. We had one truck that leaked all the way down the street. You came out and cleaned the street and then you called back and let us know you were going to repair that valve, you knew what it was. And that means a lot. And I know you're not doing it personally, so I want you to be able to take that back to your office and say, that's what we want in our city and we appreciate it.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to just mention that a lot of people that do your collection in the city of Southfield have been doing it for many, many years. Some of the people we worked on the truck together with for years too, so we've got a real seasoned crew there and hopefully you see the benefits of it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with council's permission, I'd like to move item 11 up. I have some people in the audience who are interested in providing. And if we could skip down to item 11, this is the, yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to make sure you knew we had a business that's here and they have their legal staff with them.
I understand.
Okay.
I really wanted this earlier on the agenda this period. This shouldn't take long. We have the establishment of a council ad hoc committee on economic development and redevelopment. This is stemming from a, part of our discussion on January 28th, the rezoning of the former St. Pete Church property. And, um, I'm wondering if that were the, yes, thank you. So this evening, we're, I'm asking permission from the council to appoint an ad hoc committee on economic development and redevelopment. The members would be Council President for O.C.S. Olivia Jordan, Councilman Donald Porcosi, Councilman Jeremy Moss would chair the committee. Other members are the city treasurer, Blumberg, city planner, Terry Crowe, business management manager, Rochelle Freeman, downtown development authority director, Alice Sevis, and the career center manager, Aline Bagley, a resident of Southfield. I had a suggestion made to me prior to the meeting by Councilman Frager of adding someone from the business community to this committee, working through the Chamber of Commerce. So I would like to amend what's in front of you to incorporate that excellent suggestion. There's further discussion on that.
So you think, as you're adding someone, the chamber president or someone that the chamber would recommend?
I would probably suggest someone that the chamber would recommend. We want somebody with their-
with their hands dirty in business. This committee is so insular, it's all city people, and we need to get some people that are from the outside that are involved in the committee to bring some other ideas.
I agree. I don't know if this has to be ironed out right at this very meeting, at this very moment, but we've got to figure out a reasonable way to figure out who that business is, first, and who the resident is as well, and how we, you know, there was a large group of residents that came out, you know, two weeks ago, and how to keep them active and involved in conjunction with this committee. So, I think, I don't know if you want to start tackling that now, or if you want that to be the first meeting that we hold.
You know, I had thought about with the resident to be a part of this committee. If we could announce it and then give them an opportunity to submit an application for permission, and then we do an interview and select the individual that seems to be a good fit for it.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's a good suggestion.
And we were going to look for the chamber to recommend a person.
Just for clarification, obviously, the rules that have been established, the council person, the council president has authority on his own to establish this ADHOC Committee, and it also states that the council president then appoints those members. So, what you're saying is you would come up with a recommendation, but the actual appointment would be through the council president?
We're going to have that sort of gentleman's agreement. I think this is a great idea. My plate is full. I'm glad that the three council people have stepped up to take this on, and whatever recommendation I get for the two other people, I'm good with. Okay? And I mean, I really liked your suggestion about having a citizen applicant, let the committee start that up. Okay?
This is a great next step forward. I know that there are residents that are here right now that came to the January 28th meeting and wanted to see councils have tangible next steps, and we're taking them. We take our jobs here seriously. We take economic development in the city pretty seriously as well. And, you know, this is going to be something, hopefully, we can make something meaningful of and then find solutions to some of our development problems in the city.
And then, before we move on, just going to add two other very quick things. I have a tentative confirmation from Mayor Glock of Laker Village and Council President Mercer from Beverly Hills to have a joint, three councils, Beverly Hills, Laker Village, and Southfield, meeting here in the library on April 8th. We have a COW study, study meeting scheduled for that night. Also, we're calling for a special meeting on the 21st of March, which we'll be, we'll get to later, but it's a meeting with our planning commission and the zoning board of appeals with council. And finally, City Planner Crowe will have a community meeting on the 20th of March. Location to be?
Excuse me. We're reserving the second floor of the recreation, so all the three classrooms for the 20th at 6:30 here.
And this will be a sort of a visioning community meeting tied to our master plan for that corridor from 12 to 13 along Southfield Road. And it's a meeting that is run by Mr. Crowe. It's not a council meeting.
For the 21st, have you heard that? Have you heard of Oak Park? Because they share a pretty long border with us.
I have not. I have an email from Oak Park that I haven't.
I think that their person and Alice Sevis were attending a meeting shortly and soon on something, so we can kind of look at it as an improvement forward, their business development.
All right. Thank you for the committee appointed, then, and we'll move on. Mayor Lawrence, chief of.
I wasn't listening to the meeting, but the vice chair, I can inform council ladies. I do stand on being active in this committee. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go, thank you for that, that departure, and I want to go next to the Economic Development Initiative, Telnet Worldwide. Ms. Freeman, I believe this is your.
I believe Mr. Brad is going to start the conversation.
What we have here is an opportunity for a mid-sized company going to invest substantially in a piece of property that's on Lhasa Road, south of the golf course between 8-9 Mile Road on the west side of the street, across from the industrial park, next to the Everett Institute. It is a building that is a very attractive site, wooded in the back, two types of brick, very nice, very attractive building, dark green trim, and it just screams to be occupied. It is a building that's been, on the outside, looks great, and you look inside, all it is is dirt at this point. So, it's sitting there waiting for use, but it's in an excellent location, and so we're looking forward to that building being utilized. Fred Zorn, Deputy Administrator, and Shelley Freeman from our Business Retention, and this development function will help us with understanding this, and there are representatives of the company that will be asking for our assistance in this development. I might add, this is a request to schedule a public hearing, so we will not be asking for any, we will be asking, merely to schedule a public hearing, which will be since March 18th, is it? Yeah, March 18th.
Good evening, Council President, Madam Mayor, and the board. Telnet Worldwide submitted a request to the City of Southfield for us to assist them in an economic development initiative to help them expand their facilities into the City of Southfield. Mark Anuzi from World, Telnet Worldwide is here. He has a wonderful presentation that he's going to give to us right now, along with Dan Foster from Newmark.
Grub Night Frank.
Yeah, Grub and Ellis merged with a couple of the companies.
Yeah, we, our names changed.
They're both here to give us a presentation. I also have Carolyn Bennett from BTE Energy and Mark Adams from Oakland County here in support of this project. So, Mark?
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Anuzi. I'm the president and founder of Telnet Worldwide. We're a telecommunications company headquartered here in Michigan, a Michigan-based company. I'm here today to describe to you our desire to invest into a premier data center facility here in Southfield and to seek your support in helping to clothe some of the economic disparities within that due to some other properties that we've examined. And I have a presentation to walk through today to tell you a little bit more about what the project is and why this is a good thing for the mutual benefit of us all.
Mr. Mitty, can you give us your business address for the reference?
Certainly. Business address is 1175 West Long Lake Road, Troy, Michigan.
Thank you. A pleasure.
So, once again, Telnet is a premier facilities-based telecommunications company. We provide essential communication services to small and middle-sized businesses. Every business that exists needs a community. We need internet access. We need phone service. We need to have web presence. There's many different technological things that take place, and that is the essence of Telnet Worldwide, my company. We simplify the way businesses connect, communicate, and collaborate. That is the charter of what we do. I'm very proud to be part of a very significant management team. Without good management team, to help usher along projects, it is very difficult to accomplish things, as you know. Myself, as president and founder of this company, this is my second business that I have started. I started a software engineering company back in the mid-'80s. We started off a handful of guys working in St. Clair Shores. We grew that company to over 300 people with offices around the world. In 1997, I moved the headquarters from St. Clair Shores to Northwestern Highway and 10 Mile Road here in Southfield, and we established that business in this area. The CEO that I have, my current company, came from a business known as LDMI, which was the premier telecommunications company back throughout the '80s and into the '90s. They moved their headquarters into Southfield at the American Center back in 2000, and they moved 350 people here. So, we are very much a kindred spirit to working in Southfield and with Southfield. The company was founded in 1998, with a handful of people. Today, we employ 125 people in the company. We started out in southeast Michigan with our network. We've grown and expanded after COVID in the greater state of Michigan. I'm very proud to be part of Michigan, and one of our charters was to provide alternative services to businesses throughout the state. Our growth right now is all within what is now affectionately referred to as the cloud, and I'll get into a little bit more of what they mean. In today's world, there's a thing, what we do is that we have a highly connected world that we live in these days, and our job is to make this stuff simple, so the way these businesses communicate. So, within our cloud, we're able to connect to the multitude of devices that people carry and work with today, and all the applications that they're trying to run their businesses on, from running Outlook to databases, the financial systems, whether they're at the office, or their home, or working from remotely with a tablet. They can get to these resources in the cloud, and these are the kind of services that we bring to the table. Our network, we're a regional provider. This map here shows us the way our fiber assets work throughout the Great Lakes region. The red dots indicate where we currently have small data center facility, and they go from Southfield currently. We have a small center on Lhasa Road and 10 Mile, Saginaw, Lansing, Grand Rapids, Milwaukee, and Marquette. There's also further fiber routes now that we're joined up with, like America takes us up through Traverse City and over the bridge and so forth. So, we are regionally focused, but we have a global reach. This is a list of some of our customers. We are very proud to be able to earn the business of many fine companies. We support them. We help them succeed. That is our job, is to make sure that they have a successful experience with us. At the root of who we are, though, we're really in the quality of life business, so we work to make sure that our employees have a good thing that's going on for them and how they develop their career, how we create jobs. We're looking to improve how our customers are, how their life is a little bit better because of us. We also care about how we work with the community. We work with the community in many different ways. We're active sponsors in a number of different organizations, and this is just a list of some of the things we do, and we provide free telecommunications services to some shelters and places that can't afford these items, and we look to find different ways continually to help out. So, it's a rounded out thing. Once again, it's about the theme of being part of the community. So, that's a bit of what we've been doing, but I want to speak to you now where the road ahead is. Pause for a moment. We live in a time of exponential change and growth. Things are changing so rapidly. Here are some bullet points I just wanted to highlight to you of what's going on. The top 10 jobs that were in demand in 2010 didn't even exist since 2004. Google, right now, does 31 billion searches a month. There's 2.7 billion in 2006. It's a dramatic increase. The number of text messages today exceeds the number of people that even exist on the whole planet. We go on down a little bit further. The iPhone and the iPad, they represent 72% of Apple's revenue. Those products weren't even available five years ago. And the computer that once took that fit in a building now has the power to fit in your pocket or your purse. And this will, the computational power of this in 20 years would be within size of a blood cell, how small it would be. So, what does this mean? What this means to all of us is that we continually, as companies, you have to continue to reinvent yourself. You have to be able to embrace that change. Think about Borders Books, very prominent bookseller here in Michigan, and they're no longer around, and who would have thought of that so long ago? So, we need to understand where this change is going and why it's taking place there. For businesses, what kind of stress does the change of technology mean on a business? If you're trying to compete as a small business owner, mid-sized business owner, and to be able to purchase the capital equipment that now is inside of your organization, holds your databases, to hold your accounting systems, to hold your employee records and things of that nature, that equipment and technology is changing so rapidly that the model is now starting to shift where those assets and those resources are becoming, in our way ahead of becoming like a utility, where the shift is going from spending capital expenditures for a business to moving to spending operational expenditures, so that you can future-proof those investments. And the data center now has become what I like to refer to as the factory floor of the information age. That's what a data center is, just like we have factory floors for the industrial age, for manufacturing. The data center is the factory floor for where the internet lives and where the cloud computing world lives. And for businesses, the ability to know that they can now just draw on these types of resources instead of going out and building data centers, to going out and having to put the equipment and the IT people that takes in here, gives our companies in the area a competitive advantage. And we're seeing more or less increase in this, in our regional areas. These are some figures here that just continue to go. They're drawn from notable studies. The increases are just as dramatic as I referred to earlier, and in the data center space in particular, there continues to be this gap between the demand and the supply. And so, we're here to try to help bridge that gap, especially in terms of certain kinds of data centers that exist. So, what we're providing in terms of our data center investment opportunity here is what's known as infrastructure as a service, infrastructure as a service. What does this offering mean? That means that we're creating a facility that is second to none in the area, is the intent, that it has the power, the power comes in, it's very high density in terms of power, because these machines require a lot of juice, controlled cooling, the uptime, the security, the connectivity, the entire thing about what a data center means has to be like a bunker. These are places where precious information is being transmitted. The transactions that are going through them at any given times are outstanding and amazing, and we need to have facilities that are able to meet these types of certifications that go from the uptime institute to SOX, HIPAA compliant, and beyond. And these are the kind of certifications this type of facility uses that. As described, it is a beautiful building. Unfortunately, it's been sitting dormant for 10 years. We came across this property and we said, hey, this would be an ideal location for a data center if we can make the numbers work. And at this point, I would like to then, to invite Dan to this table here to discuss about some of the analysis we did with regard to the numbers and the investment they were bringing to this project.
And Mr. Foster, your name and address, business address, the record, please.
Yeah, it's Dan Foster, and I'm with Newmark, Newmark Grub Night Frank. We just purchased Grub and Ellis, and we're located right across the street in the Traveler's Building in the old, in the former Grub and Ellis offices, and I just realized, I don't remember the address. Can I get that, can I get back to you with that? Do you know what that address is?
We know where you are.
Newmark Yoll Travelers.
Well, it's the one right across the Friday, the Friday, the parking lot over there.
Five-five-five is the old Travelers.
Oh, it is.
Not to worry.
Okay. I will, I will get that for you.
You relocated here from Farmington, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Glad to have you.
Well, thank you. Nice to be here.
Here we go. Okay, well, my job is to give you a little overview about the data center project. Mark already covered this, that's 40,000 square foot facility. It's a shell of a facility. So the good news is, is that, you know, they have a clean palette in which to work with. The bad news is, it's an expensive palette to work with, so they have to invest quite a bit of money. So the real property improvement, capital investment, which is outlined in other documents, but just to give you an overview, that'll be approximately $16 million. The personal property investment is expected to be over $21 million, and that's over the 24-month period that we're talking about. Now, that's a conservative estimate, depends on, you know, a lot of things can happen. I think Mark and Telnet fully expect that'll probably be more than that, but this is, this is conservatively what we think it's going to be. The job creation, although it's not huge, the job, the average salary of these jobs is $67,000, and that, and it also includes full benefits and a very nice benefit package. So these are high-skilled, high-wage jobs. The facility will be designed to accommodate five to eight data center tenants. So Telnet will invest the $16 million in the real property and the $21 million in the personal property, which is the infrastructure. That is to build it up to a point where they can actually then lease out space to data center tenants. And Mark will describe to you later, in detail about what those data center tenants do. But that investment will be another $50 million, and again, that's a conservative estimate. So we take all of that investment, not the $50 million, but if we take the roughly $37 million that they're looking to invest, and we apply it to your millage rates for all tax and jurisdictions, over a six-year with a PA 198, the combined winter and summer totals, and this is again, all jurisdictions, they will pay, or you will have collected, almost $3.5 million. And I break it down, I broke it down in summer and winter because some like to see that. But you can see that's quite a, that's quite a boost in your tax revenue. This slide is actually supposed to be before that other one, so I mixed them up. Now, we're back to the capital investment. Now, this is a breakdown of the capital investment. This is what we project that it's going to look like. And you have, you know, the personal property, information technology, furniture fixtures, machinery and equipment, and the building improvements over that, that's a condensed 24-month period, with, for a total of 37.35 investment. Now, the cities, this is the impact to the city. So if we take this 37.4 million dollars of investment, and we project it out over the six years with the 198, your total tax collection will be 784,239. And you can see over the years, you know, and this is based on the conservative investment, and I think they fully expect that additional investment will take place. This, again, does not take into account the $50 million that will be invested over, once the tenants make their investment. Now, here's the tenant investment. So you take the total real and personal property tax collected over six years for the tenants, and again, I broke it down by the summer and winter, just so you could get some feel to work the tax collection process. And I also did with and without. So without, and this is total, all jurisdictions, 4.3, and this is again, just on the five to eight tenants that could invest, total tax collections, and 2.5 with a 198. This is just an overview. So today, you're currently collecting about $190,000 annually on the facility, or 115 over the next six years. So if they don't do anything, that's probably what you're looking at. Now, with the investment and the improvements that Telnet's looking to make, the city would collect 785,000 over the next six years, conservatively with the 198. And the tenants would pay approximately 525,000 dollars, total net tax, roughly 1.3 to the state over the next six years. So that's not all tax.
Sure, I think I did that done a couple minutes ago. We've had some problems with these types of cooperative ventures in terms of understanding them. And, you know, this is an abatement, you're requesting, and we want to understand it. And I guess what, to me, is so important in this particular request, is there's a clear public benefit here, and it's substantial. I mean, the difference between 115,000, if we would not get involved, versus the potential of 785, not even counting the other tenants, the tenants there, just from the people that are looking us in the eye right now and asking for this, 785,000. So you have such a margin here that I think it's, you know, to be noted, the differential there, the public benefit is rather, rather astounding, versus some other requests you've had, where you have difficult, much more difficult, difficulty determining the public benefit.
Right. And that, you know, and that's a great point. And then what happens after the six years, you know, it reverts back to the ad valorem tax, and you're paying, you know, you still have substantial investment in there, so that'll be carried, you know, carried out through, you know, the future years. So that's just a condensed six-year view of this, which, so you look at it both ways, it's a great investment, any way you look at it. Here's the Telnet tenant spinoff. So, you know, this is, Oakland County did an economic impact analysis, and we just kind of put it in these bubbles, just to give you some flavor. So, you know, they occupy this building, 27 new employees come in, and that's approximately $2.4 million of payroll that's added. And then that payroll, and that investment has then, you know, translated out to the community in many ways, spinoff of new jobs and additional payroll, the new services, you know, from retail to residential, to all types of services, and the spinoff of maybe support, you know, some of the supply chain, both the downstream and the upstream. So it, you know, it has, it has benefit beyond just the, just beyond the taxing benefits. You know, this is, I think you mentioned this, this is a win-win for the city and for Oakland County and the community and the state generally. It, Mark talked about all the benefits of having the tier-three data center and how our society and how business is changing. This is a, this is an important service that is being, that is being, that could be offered to the businesses. It's challenging in the state of Michigan for all kinds of reasons, which is why you don't see a lot of tier-three data centers. You know, there's a tier-one and tier-two because they have, they can provide services. Well, the types of services that they offer are quite different than a tier-three. Mark's the more technical person to answer those questions, but it's significantly more expensive and it's significantly more risk associated with a tier-three, which, this is a tier-three enhanced, and that's why we're seeking your help. The tenants, so $37 million over two years, just to recap, $50 million from the tenants over three years, combined job creation of 30 to 40, over 1.3 million in new tax revenue, over 3.46 million in new tax revenue to all tax and jurisdictions. And Telnet's seeking to partner, literally partner with the city of Southfield, Oakland County, BP Energy, and Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and make this a viable and successful project. And we do view this as a truly win-win partnership. And this is the last slide, and I'll let Mark take it from here.
What I wanted to finish up with and describe to you, if you have technical questions, certainly. I'm a Michigan person. I was born and raised in Detroit, University of Michigan. I have hold engineering degrees, business degrees at Michigan, engineering degrees at Arizona and University of Missouri. Came back home to Michigan, started companies. I love the state, love this region. We started to build out stuff. Every penny of the money that we earn in our company goes right back into reinvesting back in. We've put in over $100 million in building out that network that you saw there, those lines of math that's in there. We need to reinvent ourselves for who we're going to be on this next generation, or our business will continue to become non-relevant, because we are a part of this technological revolution that goes on. We believe the data center properties and that cloud-based infrastructure, that data center is the cloud. If somebody says the cloud, that's what they're talking about, these bunkers, that's what that is. And then all the fiber optics that connect it, so you and I can get to it. We're doing this, and we're going to do it, and we'd like to do it right here in this backyard. And I would be delighted to know that you see this as a win-win as well.
Are you purchasing the building, or is it a lease?
We've actually purchased it a year ago. When we saw it, we got it at a discounted price. It was sitting dormant. It allowed us then to start our due diligence process to see how the site and the power and the other types of attributes of the area would go in there. So we currently have ownership of that building.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? I know Mr. Adams wants to say a word or two, I think.
Sure.
I know what you're going to say. We've heard this before, but come on up, and then I'll take council questions.
Good evening, Adam Mayer, out of our council. Mark Adams, Oakland County, 2100, Tanyet Lake Road, and as stated here, I think, these are great projects in the city of Southfield. Southfield is really becoming a favorite today in the state of Michigan. We have a cluster of businesses right here in Southfield. We think of it as Pier 24, Nexus, you think of even Cypher, what they do, the Galleria Building, and Raymond James, just to name a few, with their infrastructure that they have at Ten Mile and Civic Center. Those were all great projects that I think are coming off of the tax rolls now, and you're just reaping the tax benefits from having those businesses located here. I had the privilege of working with all of those that I mentioned, along with your economic development team here in Southfield, and some with the state of Michigan. So I think it's opportunity for more of these data center operations to come into Southfield, which would be as beneficial as been stated already. So Oakland County is in full support of it. I think it bodes well for Southfield. I know from my work that there's other projects that are, that will be coming your way pretty soon, and I hope that you see the benefit of allowing this to go through. And we're in full support from the county, and I hope that this honorable body will be too. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Fraser?
Yes. I noticed that construction of the building on the first floor, you have windows. This is such a sensitive business that you're in. Are you going to, are you doing those?
The windows actually will be, that's a very important point. The facility needs to be extremely secure. Those windows will be replaced with masonry outfitted with brick and mortar, so those will be taken out and closed. The front entryway literally will have bulletproof glass, and there's what they call a mantrap, but it's allowed so that when you come in, you're validated before you come through the doors.
Okay. I know we have a fiber optic ring in the, in the city, and one of the things that you really need is redundancy. Is our fiber optic ring adequate for the customers that you intend to?
Yeah, the connectivity is a critical component, and the redundancy of that one is also. Into the facility, there are fiber optic vaults that are, have run into that particular property. From there, we've actually then intended to construct our own fiber optic ring that connects some of the other properties, some of the AT&amp;T properties in the area as well. We also, the facility, one of its characteristics, they refer to as carrier neutral. Some of the other data centers that are in the area or in the region are proprietary, so you need to buy whatever goods that they're selling, internet services and so forth. This facility, one of its indicators is being carrier neutral, and allows the customer to decide who they would like to bring, those fiber assets that's in the building, and we'll connect it and pour it onto the particular area. So while they're using some of the infrastructure that Southfield has, we're open to those scenarios.
Okay, now, this is a non-technical question. One of the things that this council has talked about through, and our planner has been encouraging us to think, and it's a cliche out of the box, to think forward, and that is to make Southfield a place that people want to come to. One of the things that helped us meet that objective is public art. And I would ask that you would take a look at installing some public art as you remodel your building and go into business, so that you can be one of the first businesses after, you know, that we've talked about. But we intend to encourage people all over the city to have public art, that people will find that as an attractive place to take a look, even though I can't get into building it. You can sit on the park.
Well, we may start the Mona Lisa in there. I appreciate where you're coming from. The, as I described before, the, there's this balance between form and function.
Yes.
And so we have this thing that has to have this very high reliability function to it, but you're still trying to create the form that says, hey, this is something that is inspiring.
Yes.
So the way that our design architects in there, is you come into the facility, the first common area that you come into is already anticipated, perhaps not that maybe some of the ideas you have, but we'll take that back. But it's to inspire, so say, hey, this is something that's secure, it's modern, it has a presence to it, that you know you're somewhere special.
Good. Thank you.
There's two other things we'd like you to consider, and I think we're discovering this, still where I'm going. Besides, we're interested in public art, we believe it's an economic driver, we're also looking to employ Southfield people. We have a career center that helps people find jobs. You don't have to hire those people, but we'd like you to reach out to them to see if there's anybody that you could consider as a candidate, should this help you. And the other thing is getting your employees to live in the city. We have just a rich variety of housing stock, from small condos to high-rise condos, big yards, low yards, big wooded acreage, range of age of homes, and we would like, any new company that comes to us, we encourage them to work with us in having their employees live in the city.
Well, on that, there, what I would like to, with Shelley, if I can work with her, our HR department, in terms of being able to coordinate with the group you mentioned in terms of your?
Career development.
Career development, yes. Thank you.
I will definitely make the connection between our Michigan Works Office and your Human Resources, as well as we have developed material that we will ask them to share with their future employees as well.
And to the extent it has other information about the community And to the extent it has other information about the community at large, those are things that we love that stuff. I mean, it's part of being part of this fabric together. And I don't know about you, sort of commuting back and forth doesn't always sound fun. So when you're close to home and we work, kind of make a little sting out of going to the office or something.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, and that was one of my questions, having your point moving here. But can you give me, for just my own knowledge, the definition between the tier two and a tier three data?
Sure. The tiering scheme, one, the two, the three, and there's actually a tier four. In each progressive state, there's higher and higher levels of reliability and redundancy. These are established by an organization called the Upptime Institute. They provide certification so that when you go to get your sticker and say, hey, you did a good job. The Upptime Institute. The key thing about a tier three facility, well, actually, a tier three enhanced, is the concept that it's concurrently maintainable. Meaning that there's enough redundancy built into the system so that if there's any failure in any component, it's like building the space shuttle. I mean, they have so many redundant systems so that if any one of them fails, that you're not at risk of losing anything. Because the transactions that are going on are just too precious to ever have any halt in them. And moreover, that not only failures where something breaks, if things do break, that if things that need to be taken offline for maintenance, that then even in that state during those hours, if something would fail, that there's still another redundant system that could take over yet still. So a tier three enhanced facility has this redundancy upon redundancy. And the difference between it and the lower level tiers is they just have, they have less redundancy. They don't, they can't take those things offline, or they cannot take as many chest shots and still make sure that the facility is operational.
Thank you. When you look at the numbers in terms of this particular economic development initiative, to me, they're very significant to the city council. Just the fact that your real property investment, the new jobs, and last week, the dollar amount of taxes that's going to come to the city council. And these numbers, and I'm sure Mr. Charette, you get used to the dollars that come out.
Thank you very much.
So I'm just in full agreement with this, and I, you definitely have my support. I would just, we would probably differ on you believe blue light is. Glad to have you here, of course.
Thank you. Mr. Ma?
Yeah, I just, I don't have any questions in specific. I just want to echo what Councilwoman Jordan said, that, you know, the alternative is a building that's obsolete, and that's not an option for the city. So I think that this is actually a good fit, a fit intersection, and it's just, this is the type of development we're looking for in the city. So I'm excited to see you at the next step at our next council meeting.
Yes.
Can you add, I'd like to just hear when they address what they're asking from DTE, as well as Michigan Economic Development Corporation, sure, council benefit. What you're doing with DTE, and then what you're asking MEDC to do for you.
Sure. We've been working with the DTE over about eight months or so. The key thing with DTE is this redundancy aspect that I had mentioned before. We're looking for redundant power feeds into the building as well. So you say you have redundant fiber connection, you have redundant feeds from different transformer yards that would come from the DTE area. So they've been working really hard to try to figure out where those things can come from, and also to deliver the capacity. Because this is a 7.5 megawatt facility that we need. This is a serious power that's coming into this place. And so we need that not only on the primary side, we need that on the redundant side, too. So there's a big electrical field that's going to have to be fixed. But one of the good things here, I like to point out, why Michigan and Southfield seems to be really good as data centers, is our geographic zone. We're not in an earthquake zone, we're not in floods, we're not in hurricanes, we're not in all these other natural disaster areas type of thing.
365 here.
The superstorm Sandy that occurred this past, horrible storm that took place, it knocked out data centers over there, and you had companies scrambling. And what they're looking for is they're looking like for homes like here in Michigan, where they can have backup centers. So if something bad happens over there, they have, they build the redundancy elsewhere. The other thing that's cool about Michigan is that it's cool. We're actually able to offer free cooling. There's high-efficiency coolers, because these things kick off a lot of heat. And so the amount of energy, although we bring in a lot of power, the ability to dissipate it into the ambient air and use chilled water, geothermal type of thing, is another advantage of this whole upper Midwest area. In terms of DTE, they gave us some proposals, and where they provide out certain credits for new load services that help to take some of the sting out of that bill. And then we're also working with the MEDC, because we need to build a substation on property, and we're looking to see what support that they're able to help to help decorate some of that other additional infrastructure.
So you're looking to get some MEDC tax credit money, and that's part of that $100 million fund?
That's correct.
It's a grant, it's a grant.
Well, right.
But it's that $100 million that the city has, so they'll get the grant. And one of our internal discussions is then, is when that score count comes out, and we're all in the Detroit news about how that money got spent, we want to see some of that money spent here. And, you know, I want to hear that DTE got money from MEDC to make a million dollar investment in their Addison substation. And that's part of our dialogue, and we had that nine months ago?
Yes. Carolyn is here from the DTE Energy.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Bennett. My address is One Energy Plaza in Detroit, Michigan, and I'm with DTE Energy. Thanks, Fred, for that, would have encouraged.
Could you please tell me what your role is in DTE?
I do economic development for Oakland County at DTE Energy. And Shelley has been great in working with us. We have a number of these kinds of data centers that are specifically interested in Southfield. And I will say, without equivocation, we love data centers at DTE Energy. For all the reasons that Mark stated, we love them. They are one of our mainstays, and we would like to grow that industry. And there has been a great deal of interest here in Southfield. And anything that council can do to encourage that kind of growth, we are more than happy with. It is something that, as you all know, over time, things have changed here dramatically in Michigan, and it has also changed our energy company. So we have instituted some new incentives that can be very beneficial to companies that are large users, as this data center is. So we're doing everything we can to accommodate them, and we want to see buildings used in Southfield and throughout our service territory. So we would strongly encourage you to encourage them to make their investment.
Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. You referred to the data centers as being the new factory floors, and these transformers, electrical supply, fiber optics are roads and bridges of the future. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, you mentioned you've been working with DTE for eight months. And we've had estimates of 12 to 24 months to start planning for the energy sources to provide these data centers. So these are long-range things that we have to work on now so that we can continue to attract these data centers. So it's all part of a different type of infrastructure that the city has to be looking at.
Thank you. Is there anything else, council? If not, we do need a Rule 10. And I just want to say, one of the reasons we have so many Rule 10s tonight is because we cleared the agenda on the 28th of other business, and we have things to catch up, Mr. Fraser.
I'm the one who wants more meetings.
And we are having more meetings. We're going to add another one tonight.
I'll move a Rule 10, because I don't think Mr. Fraser's going to.
And it's been moved by Mr. Ma, supported by Ms. Jordan, all those in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion to schedule a public hearing on this, on the Telnet Worldwide Economic Development Initiative with the state of Southfield.
I'm going to support on March 18th.
On March 18th. And it's been moved by Ma, supported by Fraser, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see on March 18th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And you remind me of the conversation we had years ago with Raymond James after all those hurricanes in their data center in St. Petersburg, Tampa. We'll get more and more of them. Thank you. Mr. Ma? Okay, Mr. Crowe, we're going to turn to you next. We have the 2012 Annual Report Planning Commission. Council, we're not going to go through this tonight line by line by line. We're going to actually introduce it tonight, and then when we have our joint meeting with the Planning Commission, we will have further discussion on the annual report.
Thank you, good evening. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires that the Planning Commission should make an annual report to the legislative body concerning its operations and status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the legislative body related to planning and development. In my tenure, this is actually the third report that I'm presenting. But I think human nature, the report gets put in the back of a large packet, and sometimes it doesn't carry as much weight. So I just wanted a couple minutes to do an overview, and then as Council President Cyver has stated, on the 21st during our joint meeting, we can get into more detail. 2012 Planning Commission activities included fourteen site plans and special use reviews. It also included six zoning ordinance text amendments. Discussion topics included amendments to the comprehensive master plan to include the non-motorized pathway and public transit supplement, which was adopted on March 19th. The Planning Department with the commission adopted Mid-Century Modern Design Manual in March 2012. We worked with the city administrator and other departments in updating the capital improvement program, which was updated in April 2012. This was the first one done in over seven years. Working to respond to the needs of the business community, we adopted a sustainable energy ordinance, including wind and solar, which was enacted in April of 2012. Also reacting to certain trends in the community, we adopted an alternative financial services and pawn shop regulation in November. We provided regulations for fences, both residential and residential, which the council adopted in December. There was an amendment to the Bassett Building Company in our judgment. Working with Lawrence Tech students, we prepared a Rouge River corridor study. We had a third place presentation and competition. We updated the wireless communication ordinance. We actually had a proposal to consider swine and goat farming in the city. Working with you currently on the overlay development district regulation, we prepared the 2012 VRN report, which establishes some priorities for 2013, and we updated our bylaws and rules of procedure. Planning Commission held 21 study meetings, 12 regular meetings, and two long-range study meetings during 2012. 2013 planning initiatives that the commission would like the council to consider and to work with us on are developing architectural design guidelines, creating a historic district for mid-century modern architecture, continuing to look at home occupations and regulations of those. Our joint session, we hope to talk about updating the zoning ordinance and map, the types of master plan amendments that need to be done over the course of the next year, continuing to keep the capital improvement program updated so it's relevant for city administration. Look at review, our review fees and updating them with current standards, working with the building department on sign regulations, and streamlining the site plan review process. Our last master plan was adopted in 2009. The state requires every five years a comprehensive review. That document needs to be updated in early 2014. And as stated earlier, we are starting a series of neighborhood meetings to get input from the community. Our first meeting is scheduled for March 20th. We'll be looking at the Southfield Road Corridor. Other corridors that we'll be looking at are Telegraph and 12 Mile, and areas along 8 Mile, and so forth. We like to look at how climate change will impact infrastructure and long-term planning, and continue looking at sustainability and reviewing of large vacant lots such as the St. Beat's property. Working with council on mixed-use development, continuing to upgrade our transit study. Working on developing a targeted housing marketing analysis so we can identify the types of housing that are needed in the community, and continuing to update wireless communication. So that's in a brief overview of the things that the Planning Commission is working on in 2012, and items that they'd like to work jointly with the council. That will be further discussed on the 21st of March.
Thank you. That begs the question, and I mentioned, asked Mr. Charette, we need to schedule the next part of the sign ordinance?
The electronic sign, along with the height of sign?
We only did the first part, the gas station.
Correct. Now we have the electronic message sign.
Right.
That, we've got a basic draft on, so we kind of thought we'd be ready in March to bring it back to actually look at the ordinance?
I'm wondering if we might do that on the 21st of March? No? Or at least introduce it sometime? I need, we need to get it scheduled.
Do you want to put before a study session first, to start actually see the parameters of?
Yeah, at some point, you know, March 4th is taken.
Mm-hmm. That's the problem, so many of the meetings now are.
Yeah, and April 8th is taken, so we might have to schedule another meeting.
Okay, okay.
I guess they'll have to follow sometime in April then, because we also get into the Jewish hour.
Okay, so April will happen.
Can I ask, Mr. Crowe, one question as it relates to home occupations? What are you going to, what is that discussion going to entail?
Well, last year, we looked at allowing for home daycare businesses. Nothing specific, other than we do know that people, realtors and accountants work out of their homes. But we currently do not allow any home occupations. We also have a number of businesses that operate illegally out of their homes. So without having any regulations, it's difficult to either enforce or encourage. So we want to look holistically at home occupations, if they make sense for the community, based on, a lot of people telecommute now. And we don't want to create commercial businesses, but we do want to allow for accountants, realtors, and others that don't have a lot of people traffic to be able to work out of their homes. So that's what I'm thinking we would be talking about.
And then streamlining the guide plan review process, what is that, what's going to be considered there?
Well, one of the things that we hear from developers a lot is time is money. And they just would like to be able to get through a process in a reasonable amount of time. And there are things at the front end that we can do better, as far as our processing and our internal reviews. And there are things at the back end in the approval process we can do better. So we just want to have an opportunity to look jointly and say, how can we make this more efficient for the average businessman?
Any other questions on the planning annual report?
I do have a question that, I've asked this question a number of times in different venues, as far as nationally, the cities, Michigan initially, locally. And I've yet to run into someone that can, that says that there's some data out there. And that is, my concern is, what geographical percentage of a community can be nonprofit, and still, the community can still be healthy? Because nonprofits use police, fire, found roads, and yet they don't bring anything in to offset the cost of providing those. And I've yet to, you know, I'm not saying that you need And I've yet to, you know, I'm not saying that you need to get the answer, but I've asked that in a lot of different venues and nobody seems to have even attempted that look at it.
We have a planning advisory service that we're members of and they're a research body for us that can ask a question. I can tell you that coming from Utica, New York, they were the county seat, so we had local government, state government, county government, federal government, all there. We had twice the average of seniors versus the national population and they provided discounts on taxes and other services for the seniors. We became the welfare community because all the social services were located there. When we started losing some of our high-tech jobs, they decided that prisons might be a good economic development engine and they started shipping prisoners up from the New York City area. Well, what no one anticipated was a lot of families came up to be closer to their family that were imprisoned and relied heavily on social services. And there was a breaking point where more than 50% of the, between the churches, the non-religious institutions, the tax exempt, more than 50% of the tax base was being supported by smaller and smaller amounts of people. And it was a recipe for disaster. So I have some experience in seeing the downside of that, but we'll try to do some research on what an appropriate amount is for a community.
Yeah, and you know, there's, and I'm, I hope I'm right enough to know that we can't deny somebody from coming in if they want to come in, but I think we should be alert to that because we're always struggling, especially in the economy that we're trying to work our way out. We're always struggling to find out where are we, how are we going to pay the bills? How are we going to do the things that we need to do to provide the services that our people have grown to?
And there's some communities that try to find a balance between residential, non-residential, what their tax bases are and so forth. And that limits the type of services that they can offer. So that's something that could be explored during the master plan update process.
Okay, thanks.
All right, then we'll move on to item 10, which we had to discuss before and we are planning to put on for the agenda the 25th of February. Is this the overlay?
As Council President has stated, this item has been before Council twice before, last fall. Based on our preliminary discussions, Council directed us to take this back with Planning Commission, hold a public hearing to make a recommendation to City Council, which we received favorable recommendations. Public hearing has been scheduled for February 25th. I wanted one last opportunity to just give an overview and to answer any questions that the Council may have. Again, the purpose of the overlay development district is to encourage development, bottom line. And to do that, we want to create greater flexibility with the traditional zoning. Our community is a first ring suburb. It was pretty much designed in the auto-dominated 60s and 70s with large setbacks and the land use pattern that we find, a lot of our office development is built in the center of the site surrounded by a sea of asphalt parking. And we control that because we require a 75-foot setback around all our sites. And I have an example of what we've created based on our standards and we want to create greater flexibility. As a trade-off for the greater flexibility, we expect higher architectural design, we expect improved pedestrian amenities and we want to grant flexibility with regards to mixes of uses so that the developer has a greater return to greater density. So that's it in a nutshell. I've handed a map out and we've got three districts that we've targeted as the starting point for a trial of the overlay development district. Each of these districts were chosen specifically because they offered the greatest reward as far as using this as an economic development tool. We have our downtown development authority which has been created, has a dedicated funding source and has high density of residence, businesses and services such as Oakland Community College and Providence Hospital. Our second district is your city center district, which the Council adopted a principal shopping district, it's a special assessment, it has a defined boundary and it has probably our highest density of office workers. And the third district that we've identified is the Telegraph Road Corridor specifically from 8 Mile to 696. This has a great concentration of high-tech research industry and we think that these three districts make the greatest sense for creating this flexible tool. Once the framework has been put in place, which this ordinance allows, then the secondary things that we can work on are gateway signage and wayfinding. This is just an example of the north and south landscape meeting of the Telegraph Road where if we want to convey an image of high-tech, we could have a very high polished stainless steel signage, we can use LED lighting, we can use innovative signage and streetscape elements to convey that district. We talked about the city center creating a more pedestrian-friendly district and it could have its own layers of wayfinding signage and so forth as well as the downtown development authority. Another thing that could be created within each of these districts that are unique to these districts are design guidelines. So where we have a greater concentration of mid-century modern architecture, we could develop those guidelines so that at least new development and redevelopment of our older buildings that are 50, 60 years old, we can hold them to a higher standard and make sure that they're complementary if not consistent with that architectural style. So there are many other layers that can come forward after this development district This is the example of the Pomeroy Site that's currently vacant across the street. And prior to the buildings being torn down, there was four office buildings that are highlighted in red with some green space on the interior. When I said they were surrounded by a sea of asphalt, you have, you have large parking areas that are created on the periphery of the buildings in the center and there's no connectivity to the street. Matter of fact, we didn't even require sidewalks on three sides of this development. And that was a traditional standard first ring suburb model, but we require a minimum of a 75-foot setback. And so this development was just responding to what our ordinance allows. Now our vision, at least in the city center district, is to create a more walkable pedestrian-friendly environment, get the buildings up close to the street to create that ambiance, to create that pedestrian scale with retail on the first floor and office and residential above. But a developer today would have to go and get a 75-foot, 72-foot waiver from the ZDA in order to do what we require. The second thing is, even in our regional center district which does allow mixed use, the mixed use is limited to 10% as an accessory to the principal building. So if you had 100,000 square foot office building, you could have no more than 10% as a retail. That's about our level of mixed use that we allow in our current regulations. So what this ordinance does is again, it's just another tool in our toolbox, but if we have a specific developer that has a specific vision in mind of trying to create and he wants to mix housing with office with retail and he wants to build it close to the road and he wants to do some other things, this is basically a contract between the City Council and that developer. It's a defined guideline that's unique to that site. A development agreement gets established working with the City Attorney's Office, the Council and the Planning Department. And then once that development agreement has been approved through a rezoning process, then the developer can come back and knows that if he meets all these standards, he can build it and he can build it quickly. And when I said time is money, developers are willing to put the extra things in there if they know upfront what they are and they know that they're going to have a reliable review process and at the end of the day, if they meet their requirements, they can build it. So that's just one example of how one particular site under conventional zoning can be reimagined under our overlay district. And the beauty of this is, is if a particular developer doesn't come in and wants to put all the bells and whistles that the Council wants, then you don't have to approve it. And so it's on a case-by-case basis. The other thing is, we've got a list of permitted uses for each of the districts that we want to encourage this tool to take place, but it's not inclusive of all types of development. So we don't have a gas station as being able to take advantage of this because we don't think long-term that's a viable, a viable business in the sense that we want to relax all of our regulations. There are regulations on minimum size of a gas station and how far the driveway should be and so forth and they're there for reasons because of traffic impact, circulation and so forth. So again, I think this just helps us be more competitive, it's done on a case-by-case basis and ultimately it helps us get to the vision that we want. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Yeah, well, first of all, you know, I talked so much about B3, B3, B3 that, you know, I think this is what's a wise trend for the city to keep going forward and going after. What are tangible next steps for us as a city to do should this, you know, go forward to the public hearing and go forward as a new zoning option? How do we get the message out to developers that we have this new option, we have a vision that we want to put in, need three different corridors in Southfield? How do we bring them to the table?
Part of it's going to be in communications and marketing strategy. I think Mr. Jordan challenged us after we adopted the fence ordinance. We surveyed all existing businesses that either provide fencing or fencing services not only within the city and all the bordering communities and we prepared a package and sent it out saying, these are new guidelines. And we got a lot of positive feedback from that. This is another way of us marketing. Michelle Freeman in her packages that she hands out, this is another tool that we can say with ground fields and tax abatements and other things that we have available. We know we have a couple of local developers that want to take advantage of this and as soon as this gets adopted, we'll start bringing some projects through our process. Working with the media, you know, we've got a number of good relationships with our media outlets to talk about this. And this gives us an opportunity, it's been a positive message. I think you and I talked that a lot of times we're in a reactionary mode, this makes us proactive. Yeah. And there'll be some tweaks along the way and if this is successful, the Council might decide to open it up to the entire community or open it up to large parcels. But this is a great starting point and we think the merits of these three districts based on their density, based on the types of development are a great starting point.
That's going to be my next question. Are there disadvantages to just doing this citywide? You still have the ability to take it project by project.
Again, I think with all things new, we want to be, we want to let it run its course a little bit, tweak it before we open it up. I'd be the first one to say that maybe if this works after a year, we can consider large parcels throughout the district. You might have to need a minimum qualification. What we don't want to do is, I don't want to, I don't want to recommend stifling creativity. So if somebody in our city center district has a small parcel that's maybe only one acre and they can come up with something creative, let's at least listen to them and we don't want to put too many parameters. When we start getting outside of our, these three districts, there's a lot of other variables and I hate to create a formula, but then stifles the creativity that we're trying to create.
Other questions?
Is this our last opportunity to talk about this before we go to the public hearing? I have a question. Help me out on this, this site plan approval. Up until we approved the overlay district, the Council had final say on the site plan approval. It appears that in this overlay district, the Planning Commission has the final approval on the site plan. I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
Okay, and again, that's something that could be looked at, but let me try to explain why it's structured this way. Again, this is about allowing a quick, quick response to allay any concerns you have. The Council is going to be the one that creates the document and there might be 20 conditions or 30 conditions. So you're basically establishing those conditions that the site plan has to meet. And so if the site, if you're comfortable creating all the conditions on the development, then the developer has the assurance that if I meet these 20 to 25 conditions, I can get quick and fast approval. And that's why it's created this way. It's open for discussion, but we didn't want developers to go through a three, four, five month process and then have to go through another two or three month process. And different than traditional rezoning where you're just looking at rezoning, you're basically having a 90% conceptual plan in place, so you will be able to weigh in on that and you're establishing all the guidelines. You're just not specifically saying, these street trees are this, of this character variety. So you're allowing the Planning Commission to do that last 10%, okay. So you are going to have a conceptual plan that for all practical purposes is a site plan and you're going to have a document that's going to be recorded and enforceable that you as Council are going to agree on. And then it's basically the last final check that the Planning Commission is going to make sure that it's complying with what the Council documents.
Here's where I'm having a, and I hear what you're saying and I guess I'm going to have to work my way through it to see how it actually works, but here's where I get goosebumps. Let's, let's say that the piece of property, the St. Bees property came in two pieces. The first piece was to change the zoning to B3, which sounded legitimate. And then Walmart came in with their plan. If the Planning Commission had final say on the site plan, we would have a Walmart because they did say, okay. And when it got to us, we had a different view of what we really wanted at that. And I don't think we're sitting around the table with, absent a real plan, we're smart enough to think of all the pieces and parts that we really want until we see the plan and then we can modify it.
Here's one of the differences.
Okay.
Whereas if it got rezoned B3, there's a whole list of reasons to move to B3, then they'd have to meet all of the site plan conditions. Remember, Planning Commission was recommending favorable to B3 because it was consistent with the master plan. They weren't recommending that Walmart got approved. There's a fine distinction. But in this document, you could say, we don't want any big box development over 90,000 square feet and that's a condition that you put in. We don't want this type of use. We only are going to allow these types of uses and you might narrow the list of 30 potential uses down to four. That's what you have. So then the developer can come in and as long as he can meet those four criteria and doesn't do the things that you say he can't and he checks all the boxes off, then he can get his final site plan approval. So unlike just a normal site plan where you don't see anything at all, the Council doesn't see anything at all, you're basically seeing a 90% complete conceptual plan and you're also dictating what uses can be permitted and more importantly, what uses you don't want to permit, plus all the other design elements, architectural guidelines and so forth that we currently do not have any regulations on.
Yeah, and I admit that, you know, I have to see it. I'm not saying that it won't work, but I have to see, you know, the old saying is, you can, you can take my approval from my cold dead fingers, you know? It's hard to give up something you already have and.
And I'm trying to assure you that I'm really not giving up. At the same time, some of our criticism for the development community is, we go through this long drawn-out process, I met all the boxes and I still think it approved. So this is a little bit of faith, but I can assure you, you are going to have the ultimate final say. And if you say, you know, these 10 things have to be met, these are the only uses permitted, that's the only way that this project could go forward. Otherwise, I've got to come back to the council, with minor exceptions on real minor, minor things.
That's what I'm saying. I've got, I've got to see how, an example of how it's going to, going to go down, and once I'm convinced, I'll be your strongest supporter.
And again, we're, we're trying, we're trying to do this so that we can be competitive.
Yeah.
And the Telenet example about how things are changing and changing exponentially, this is, this is one of those things to try to level the playing field for us.
Okay.
So I know it's new.
I think what you're trying to say is, and maybe this is part of it, is that, all right, we say, "Okay, here's property X, and it can have, it can have this, this, and this, and it can't have this, this, and this." But then the developer comes on and says, "Well, I have a better idea, and we've already nixed it." So how do you, how do you, how do you rectify that? Do you have to come back to us, right?
Right. If it's a significant change, it would have to come back. Now, a developer is, has got a lot of time and money going into this process, so they already know they have the deal in place before they're going to propose this. This is, we're not requiring people to take advantage, this is an option. So they can continue developing under the conventional zoning within these districts, but if they want to try to do something innovative, this tool is available for them to take advantage. So we're not requiring every development to come in under this guise, because this, in essence, is a rezoning. It goes through the planning commission with a public hearing, it comes to city council with a public hearing. But the difference is, instead of just rezoning carte blanche to a district, it has a development agreement that is recorded by the city attorney in conjunction with the developer, based on the conditions that council put in. And it's, as close as I can say is, it's like a consent judgment, all right? They have to follow those requirements, and if they want to change it, they have to come back through the process to get the council's approval to change it. And not unlike other consent judgments, if a use that was permitted and agreed to in the consent judgment comes in, the planning department will just review it to make sure it meets the requirements of that consent judgment, and a lot of times, it doesn't come to the council. So it's, it's similar to consent judgment, except that it's a free and willing negotiation between developer and the city as opposed to a court-initiated agreement. I think that's the best way I can explain what it's like.
Okay. Well, we'll work, we'll work through it together.
Well, I guess, I, I, I'm not willing to have that. I'm a woman of faith and not that much faith. And I, I don't, and that's my, my, my main concern with the same thing that Myron mentioned was, basically, the planning commission has the final approval.
Yeah.
And I'm not, at this point, willing to give that over to the planning commission because we either look at the 12-mile Southfield Road project. Planning commission said, "Yes, now to vote it off." I mean, we're on two different pages. We're an elected body, they're an appointed body, things are different. We have to face the public, they don't. And in any of these, I agree with the overlay district, but just not this one. You know, if there's some development that may occur, in any of these parcels here that council has not given the, the final approval when it comes to the planning, we're still country, we're still out front, and we're going to take the heat for these to go there. And I'm going to, if I'm going to take the heat, then I'm going to have to consult. So I really think, I think this needs to be reworded to just have what we currently do. And if we need to go back and revisit the process, go it shorter, that can be done. But I think we have to stay with our normal process, because I'm not willing to give up making the final authority be the planning commission. I'm not willing to do that.
Well, I almost see a function of fixing that as the creation of that ad hoc committee. You know, things come maybe through us as a filter before it goes to planning commission, rather than the other way around, who goes to the planning commission, and then council has the final approval. I see this as the exact purpose of what we're trying to do with this new ad hoc committee, in working at the front end rather at the back end.
But in this instance, the site plan is approved by the planning. So basically, the rubber stamp has already taken place, and we really can't do much legally if we don't want it, if they're right to-
Right. The planning commission would be, they would approve the site plan. It would never come back to council under this current-
But it is, it is subject to all the additions that the-
No, I, I understand, sir. I'm just saying literally that-
And you know what? I stand here tonight and easily switch that to city council because I think this is such an important thing. I, I don't, I'm hoping that it doesn't get slowed, slowed down or not approved on the 25th. And if that's what, what I'm hearing the consensus are, that's an easy thing to fix. And all I'd ask is that the council then work with us on trying to streamline that final review process.
Agree with you on that.
Because that, that is what we hear loud and clear as one of the challenges of doing business here. And again, this was never to assert any, any power from the council, because I thought it was ironclad that you had the final approval. But if that's what it takes, you know, as your planner, I'm fine with that as well. I just, again, we're trying to respond, we're trying to provide this extra tool. If it's 99% there, and that's the only change we have, and council's committed to working with us and making sure it gets fast-tracked-
Sure.
-then, then maybe what we can do is, if, if the approval is done, it can get fast-tracked directly to the council as opposed to going to the planning commission, because they're already going to be making the recommendations through the process. And that way, we maybe knock off a month. Or maybe the site plan comes, is far enough along that, like our similar process, you approve the rezoning and then secondary approve the site plan. So if we, if we can work together on doing that, I think we can still have a winning combination.
I think realistically, Mr. Croft, I don't really have the support for the way it's written here, having heard from other people around the table, some are not there.
So if we, if we make this amendment to item 10, site plan approval, do you think that there's enough support moving forward?
I think so. I think this is, this is a tripping point.
Okay. Well, that's why we have these workshops, though.
I know the mayor wants to say something, and then I, I possibly add one more thing to it.
I think we need to have a little more dialogue. I, I would be uncomfortable with the planning commission having the final say. However, the council, for this to work, the council has to embrace that this is the concept. It can't be the way we've done it before, where every project, we rip it apart, spin the building around, do it this way. It amazes me that a project can go through all those steps for months, and then the council say, "Well, I think we should spin it around. I don't like it looking that way." It, it comes to a point when the developer has spent all this money, gone through all the recommendations, and then we're still spinning the, the building around. And embracing this concept, and this is mostly commercial, or can we say that of development over a certain amount, but I understand the apprehension of the council because the bug does stop with them voting on a decision and with me as well. So, but I just, I want to, I don't want to continue to do it the same way. We're just adding the same thing. We have to be open to compressing that process, and there has to be a certain amount of respect for the process that the planning commission has, because it's created not by our desire, isn't it required?
Well, it's based on state law and the zoning ordinance.
City law requirements, right. My plan is to be approved, right, so.
But, I mean, the site plan committee is therefore a reason, and we've got to get to the point where we don't think they are on one page or one another.
Mm-hmm. And I think that's the bottom line. I think if, if we can agree that, you know, we want a building to look good, and so that has to come from planning to council as opposed to them just accepting a, you know, they just accept a square building, and then we want to keep flowers around it. I think they've got to understand what we're going to approve, so with that said, they'll say, "Let's keep those flowers around it before it even gets to-"
Well, hopefully, I'll, I'll dialogue on the 21st.
But I would say, you know, as much as, you know, when I appoint a commissioner, the council makes a point of saying, "You don't work for the mayor, you know, you, you need to..." But also, they have certain guidelines, and as a body, there's a lot of dialogue. If you look at it, they have public hearings. They are making a decision based on information, and they shouldn't be saying, "Well, we got to do it this way because that's what the council wants." They do have certain amount of integrity that you want them there to give input, and they are residents. They're not like contractors. They are residents, and they're staying in their city, and the council has that right to say, "That's not what we want." But I don't want, I don't want any of our commissioners to think that they have to make a decision just because the council wants it to play. There's no reason to have it, and we just buy that, because they're only going to make a decision based on that. But, and I understand we're going to debate this some more, but I, I just, we've got to shorten the process, we have to become more economic-friendly, and, and Lord help us if we've got to put it through another committee, Mr. Moss, but I, I just, the thought of that makes me cringe, although you will decide how you function, but some kind of way, we've got to get some trust, you know, somewhere between, somewhere between there, not total, saying you have no input, but also recognizing that each phase, your planner, your, your commission, and you as a body, because, you know, it's, they're recommending, they're, they're not deciding, and I think that's the difference. Before, we understood they were recommending, but when they become deciding, then that's a whole different.
This is a, this is an easy change to make. I'll make sure it gets changed tomorrow so it's ready for the 25th.
And I have one other question that maybe could be an addition. You know, we've talked about public art, and I'm wondering if that cannot be incorporated into the overlay district.
Yep, that's, that's an easy thing to add.
We don't have the fun to, it is an economic driver, it will, it will, to me, will not only help the city, but it will help the site. They tend to be landmarks, and, you know, we, some of it is just simple neighborhood identification. You know, but I'd be happy to talk to you further about it, but if you come up with a way you'd like to insert it, then I'd ask that you alert the council to the pieces that we need to take another specific look at before the 27th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the key to this whole thing is, and I'm glad you don't, we've talked about it, talked about it, and never did it, the fact that we're going to sit down as the council, the planning commission, zoning ordinance. Sitting down in the same room, talking about things so that we understand where everybody's coming from. Today, we're like the three blind men in an element. You know, everybody thinks they know what the other person is seeing. But I think once we sit down, we're going to have a better opportunity to shrink this process, because it won't be going here and back again and back and forth, and then we change it. So I'm with you. You and I, when I was council president, you and I talked about, "How do we go about shrinking this whole process?" Because time is money. If developer goes to get some money out, they got to start paying interest on that money, and they got to start paying it back as quick as, as the next month. And if we're monkeying around, stretching things out, because it's not our money, you know? That's why we get the bad reputation.
And a lot of times, developer has to put a deposit down to do its due diligence-
Sure.
-and it's good for six months, and then they realize that the process is going to take another six months, they're going to put more money down, and all of that factors into our ability to get redevelopment.
That's right.
So those are two easy fixes. I will make sure they get done, and an advanced copy gets sent to the council.
Can I add one more? I just kind of noticed it just seems like it maybe just stuck out, is the hours of construction, the construction, and then the improvement, and then hours of construction, is that needed to be included in exactly?
It, it isn't. I was just trying to be consistent with the building department's hours of construction.
If I could just, that precise language is already under the nuisance section of the code. So you already cannot do construction demolition during those hours. So if we, if we duplicate it here, if you ever change that, you've got two places you got to go back and amend. I mean, it's already-
All I could say was, the previous building official wanted it in there. That was his recommendation. I can easily take that.
And now the current, the current one says, "Why are you putting that in there?" So it is, it is duplication. It really is, because it's already dealt with.
Already gone.
Okay.
And I would add, one, our next item is giving a meeting on the 21st, but I think one of the other important features besides what Mr. Fraser has said about needing a planning commission as a zoning board appeal is, we don't know these people very well.
That's right.
And I had the occasion, we had a meeting in this room one night on a planning commission mess, and just as an aside to tell you this, our meeting went a little late, and they were waiting to take, take the room over, and so I said, "Oh, we're just finishing up, come in and sit down." And the people, really, I had not met, and I struck up a conversation with Mr. Richter-
Griffiths.
Griffiths, who does the home remodeling right over here in Adler, and he's doing, I mean, I, I want to know this guy. I mean, he's taking houses in a neighborhood, and, and he just showed me a few pictures, and they were fabulous, of how he's just updated existing housing stuff. You know, I applaud that. And here, I, I'm just meeting with the man, so, and I'm sure-
He should be tanned.
I'm, I'm sorry?
He should be tanned. What, he was a pod?
Well-
I was going to say that. You took my thunder.
Certainly. I meet a lot of people, I shake their hand, and, you know, do I know them? So this is, this, we see this evening, and so I'm, I'm going to segue right into it. We see this evening as being part of social. We're going to have it in the community room in the library. It'll be an informal, an informal meeting, but I would say the council will be prepared, bring your, the things that you'd like to, to bring up that evening, and as we have an open discussion with our planning commissioners and our zoning board of appeal members.
And just real quick, Mr. Griffiths is an example of an architect who has a family, who has a home, who's making an investment in the community. Mr. Lightner is a former Lawrence Tech student who, his exposure through that school made him start his business and buy a home here. Ms. Dillard is a young professional attorney who lives in the townhomes across, across the way that wants to make an investment in the community. And we have some more seasoned planning commissioners who've been in the community for a long time, so we have a good balance. I think it'll be a great opportunity, as you said, in a discussionary format to get to know each other, and then to talk about the issues that are important to the council, as well as hearing what the planning commission sees from their side of things.
We're going to start the meeting with, ask each person, council and planning commission as well as zoning board, to introduce themselves, give a brief bio of who they are. Not a memoir, but at least it gives them a background as a way of getting to know, know one another. This way, we'll be able to, we'll connect people and faces, and, you know, I, I think we all read the minutes of the planning commission, but sometimes I wonder why people ask the questions they do, like say, the things they do in the minutes, and it's good to help.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need, do we have to do this with a rule ten, or why not?
Yes, you would.
All right. It's a move by Ms. Jordan, supported by Mr. Moss, to have a rule ten. All of us in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Um-
Of course.
Uh, move by, uh, Jordan, supported by Moss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Should we have to do anything with the overlay district? Or schedule a public hearing? No, that's just-
I think it's already scheduled.
Already scheduled. Based on your prior, uh-
Got it.
Yeah. This is just your, this hopefully last opportunity, um, to ask questions, but you all, we'll have time on the twenty fifth.
And, and, and between, and between now and the twenty fifth, I'll, I'll make those updates. Get your copy, and, and then if you've got additional feedback, I'd rather be prepared to answer them at the twenty fifth. But I, I, just real short, we have one or two developers that are in the wings waiting for this to happen. So, um, I hate to have it delayed any, any further. And so I'll put the time in to make sure you're happy with it before the twenty fifth.
If you do your part, we'll do ours.
Okay.
We look forward to the twenty fifth. All right, thank you.
Um, I think twenty first, twenty fourth.
Twenty first.
The twenty first is the joint meeting. The twenty fifth is the public hearing.
Twenty fifth February. Okay. All right, moving on, uh, we have, uh, an act of ordnance.
Yeah, ordinance.
Uh, sixteen oh one, we need a rule ten, yeah.
And a motion for a-
Uh, I need support. Uh, move by Jordan, supported by Moss. All of the favor of rule ten.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
This is an act of ordinance.
I have a question.
Uh, hold on. Move by Jordan, supported by Moss, uh, question.
In the piece of property for the funeral home that we rezoned for parking, there was one section that was split in half, and half looked along to St. B's, half looked along to the funeral home. Has that been deeded to the funeral home? Has that-
I, it will have to be in order for it to be rezoned. It will have to come through with a lot split. So that, that is, I don't know Terry, where that is in the process, but that'll-
The, the, our side is, is in favor and approve the rezoning. The, um, the, um, transaction between them and Yonoh hasn't been finalized yet. But if, even if that didn't go forward, they have approved the rezoning from residential to parking. And they are working on-
Right, and totally independent of the rest of the place.
Totally independent. They, they, uh, you know, that doesn't, um, the transfer, they're still in favor of the rezoning.
So it'll have to happen.
Yeah. Except what we do, when we do this, the piece of property that were, were, that's in, covered in the ordinance goes- We can't, we can't-
You cannot buy this. You're not including that piece. But once that transaction occurs-
Yeah.
Then it will be included within the ordinance as an active.
But let's say that everybody gets, you know, their, their mind goes blank and then nothing ever takes place to-
Then it would not be, that's true. It would not be included.
Well, if I could though, they, they still in favor of having it rezoned from residential.
Were they a co-applicant on the rezoning?
Yes.
St. B was-
Well, this, this is what, the way it was explained to me. Yonoh's was the applicant with the permission of St. B's to have it rezoned. And I, I've asked the back, backup for that. I specifically asked them about, um, the transactions. And they are in full support of the rezoning of that sliver of the piece from residential to vehicular parking.
So when will that transaction occur? That, are they in the stage of closing that, settling out that acquisition?
And, uh, part of that was, um, had to be renegotiated because the Walmart parking go forward.
Does that sound, Mr. Fraser?
Well, what, do we delay the, the enactment of this ordinance until that piece is done, or do we?
You, you certainly could, but I think again, if, if, if that transaction never occurs, if there's never a split, it doesn't become-
That piece would still be rezoned, but it would have-
But it wouldn't become part of the overall funeral home site.
Well, the, that would affect the site plan portion of the site.
Exactly, exactly.
But the rezoning would still go forward.
I don't know whether that was a separate split off piece, or was that separately described?
What they would do is, there would be a lot split, lot combination based on the transaction.
So the split would have to occur because this was a, for a defined portion of that, of that piece.
Which-
When we were doing V three.
Right.
But the, the Southfield Funeral Home paperwork on the rezoning had legal description based, provided by their engineer on that separate piece.
So a meets and bounds that included this portion.
Yes, that's right.
So then it has been, when you enact, even though currently it's owned by St. B's, if the transaction hasn't closed, it still has been rezoned because of meets and bounds description. But we still will need to follow up and get a lot split to, to split it off from the remaining piece of St. B's.
That, that's correct. But, but a separate legal description was provided for that piece-
Right, I understand.
That was, was part of the application by Yonoh moving forward. That was part of the, the public hearing.
The meets and bounds did describe this piece, this little piece of the St. B's property. So whether St. B's continue the ownership or Yonoh assumes ownership, it has been rezoned by that meets and bounds description. But I agree, we do need to do a follow up instantly to make sure the split occurs.
Yes.
So that it is now included.
Right.
For example, it, right now, it's not taxed. It's still part of St. B's. If it's put over to a private use, it would be, it would be taxed.
Or if somebody buys St. B's property, they own that little piece.
Which would be zone as parking.
Yeah.
Right. So I, I do think we need to, we need to follow up internally.
And I had that conversation with them last-
Okay, okay. So I think if you just, you know, we, I think that that is going to occur. If you wanted to withhold the enactment, but I don't think it's necessary because the meets and bounds has, has gone ahead and rezoned that.
I'm uncomfortable with the, uh, person that, and I, you know.
Pardon me?
I'm comfortable with the person.
Yeah, but you said you were no such thing you need to talk to. That's an eight mile road.
It's two minutes.
I'm all good.
Yeah.
I've got my question answered.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to, uh, enact, um, fifteen oh one. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Terry. All right. We now move on to the communication portion of our agenda. And, uh, the first, uh, person who, um, has a basic statement is-
Terry?
Pam, I'm here to ask you. Is that already Pam? And that we got, we're not, uh, approving this meeting.
Are we allowing interruptions at the council table?
Uh, excuse me one second. I'm sorry. Um, all right, Ms. Gerald, floor is yours.
Just wanted to know if we were allowing interruptions at the council table during a meeting. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Pamela Gerald. I am an independent voice for Southfield. If you're listening to my voice via YouTube or audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O. Box one fifty five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. I'm just a phone call away, via email, a click away. What I was gonna say tonight, I, I decided to, um, change, and I'm gonna just comment on some of the things that have taken place during this council meeting. The first thing I wanna talk about is the intent to establish a council ad hoc committee on economic development. Now, you established who the members would be, and you talked about there being a joint council, um, meeting between Beverly Hills, Laker Village, and Southfield. And you talked about the Chamber of Commerce. Now, is that the Chamber of Commerce, the one that's been here? Or are you talking about including the Southfield Black Chamber? Which we've had a Black Chamber of Commerce in this city for a year. I heard no mention of bringing that chamber to the table. And I think they should be included. The reason why they were formed is because of black companies feeling that they were not included in this economic development process. So I think you need to redirect that portion of your conversation. Now, this idea with the parks and recreation and installing the, um, the surveillance system, I think that's a terrific idea. But what we still need to consider is that in the city of Southfield, we are still down over thirty police officers. That would be a great addition, but you put thirty police officers with it, and our security and our public safety will be absolutely tight. So I'm going to reiterate to this administration and this council respectfully, settle that arbitration, give our police officers the contract that they deserve because they have not had a contract since two thousand and eight, and maybe even consider a raise. Remember, every time you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives. And all you have to do is look at the Southfield Sun and listen to the police blotter to see what's going on in this city. We definitely need to tighten up security and law enforcement in this city. And I think, uh, to say that we should continue doing more with less, what about doing more, giving a little more? Every time a tax abatement project comes up in the city of Southfield, you guys don't think about, with the taxes that you're giving away, how many police officers we can hire and how many firefighters? We're still down seven firefighters. So let's start talking about no tax abatement, selling the city on the things that we're known for. And if they wanna come in Southfield and be a part of this diversity, center of it all process, then they'll pay the cost. So I want you to consider that. Now, I'm not even sure if I wanna say this. Um, my friend Ken Peterson is gone. I think that, I, I'm not for Walmart in the city of Southfield. I don't think the fit is, um, for this city. But I would like to see, if you're going to explore the option of this Walmart and do this rezoning and pass it through by the residents, um, and slip it through, why don't you put the Walmart across the street? If the hundred thousand dollars is so important to you guys, put it across the street where you could keep an eye on your one hundred thousand right from the window. They're right near the police department, so the response would be fast because we know there's gonna be crime in the parking lot. I think that before you do anything with Walmart, you should properly advertise what it is that's gonna happen, what you're doing and what you've done. Because what you said tonight about this rezoning with the funeral home in the parking lot, I didn't understand. So I'm gonna quit real early and just say, "You guys could do better." But before I quit, I wanna say, settle that arbitration. We got a lot to be proud of, but we still got some housekeeping to do. And that's before fifteen seconds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lord, your star.
Mr. President, my na, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is gerardmullin2012@gmail.com. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the proposed, the proposal to limit public comments from five to three minutes. I think this is a terrific idea. Why? Less is more. On Thursday, November nineteenth, eighteen sixty-three, the great orator of the day, Edward Everett, spoke for two hours to a crowd of fifteen thousand folks gathered in Pennsylvania that day. Everett was followed by a second speaker who spoke only for two minutes, using two hundred and sixty words. Every school child knows today those two hundred and sixty words by heart. And yet not one single child knows who Edward Everett is. Of course, I'm speaking of Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address. The greatness of Lincoln's speech was immediately recognized by Everett, who wrote the President, quote, "I should be glad if I could fire myself that I came as near to the central idea in two hours as you did in two minutes," unquote. Less is more. Please note, I've tried to emulate honesty tonight by keeping my presentation under two minutes. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. P.S., the sixteenth president will be celebrating his two hundred and fourth birthday in just under two hours from now. Thank you.
He'll go out and celebrate. Miss Lilly, I think he is.
Good evening, Mrs. Lilly.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, et al. I'm Lin Fong Yi. Lin Fong Yi, for the record. I live at two oh one three oh Winchester Drive, Southfield. And I applaud you for item eleven. It's the most wonderful thing that ever happened to Southfield. Twelve years ago, I was at Rochester, Minnesota, at the Mayo Clinic. And that was the first community that I said, "Wow, Michigan should have this." I was still living in Michigan at the time, not Massachusetts. It was a community where what Southfield is doing now, starting to initiate, thank goodness, was already in place. Everything was seamless. The three hospitals worked together, all that stuff. Okay. Now, this is why I really wanted to come and why I stayed tonight. I think that one resident on this committee will not be enough. Our strength in this coalition that was hastily formed because we had such a short time span to do it was our, our diversity. There were some misunderstandings, unfortunately, because we were so diverse, weren't we Pam? We were so diverse. But we are now coalesced into one strong, despite our differences. We need at least two representatives on this committee. Please figure this out. Because we are so strong now that even though we're so diverse, we talk to each other. We are able to converse with the na, the community like you did. This, today, after I had my hair cut, and I finally had a haircut, I went to the Strick, Strick Mall at Thirteen Mile and Southfield Road. And I walked into the Ace Hardware Store. Have you guys ever been there? It is what we need. It is a community store. You go in there and you, and you are family. Do you know who, who, who owned that place? Damon Hardware. Remember where Damon Hardware was? That was a family store right on Southfield Road, and they moved up there. Mr. and Mrs. Damon embraced me. I am diverse, but they embraced me. And today, we talked about, they didn't even know what was happening in Southfield. I was the one that told them, and they said, "Oh, my God, this is what we have to do. We have to have our residents with our relationships, like you were talking about, know that people are human. They are not official. It is not Chief Ken Cyrus, but Ken Cyrus, the good guy who really has his heart in Southfield. And Jerry V. Moss, the little twerp who everybody says, "Hey." He is a wonderful guy. And, and Mayor Lawrence, you and I, we've had our moments. I have a rear end up there and you said, "What are you doing out there, digging in the dirt, right?" As I'm helping Jerry Witkowski. And he's a wonderful guy. He's not the head of cops. We need this kind of relationship. And that was there in Rochester, Minnesota, when I was there thirteen years ago, and my son was fighting nasal ferrogeal cancer, and he's still alive, thanks to Mayo Clinic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lilly. That concludes our communication now for, uh, council, um, items.
I guess I have one item in this, in our council package. And it was a communication from an individual that lived here over on Phillips Street.
Right.
And he, he received a letter in the mail, and it's sort of misleading. Have you seen him?
I have not.
Can I give this to you? Because he gives a suggestion, um, of what we can do to register. Would you give that, um, to your head?
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of it, uh-
And he says that maybe we could send something in the water bill for our residents not to be enticed with pain.
We, we discussed this.
Can we do to protect this is done?
It's quite difficult.
Yeah.
It's a legal, uh-
Right.
It's insurance.
It's different than any other thing you need to get the mail.
Right, right. But you're right. I mean, what we've tried to do is encourage people to call the water company because they get the big boys all the time. And they explain to them- And they explain to them. Right, there are.
The water lines, there's a water line quote unquote policy. And the thing about water lines is they hardly ever break. So it certainly offers an opportunity for income to the company. And then there's one that includes the sewer line, which sometimes does happen, that do have issues, but we don't know what the coverage is. But I don't know how you tell them they can't do business.
But can we notify our residents on our table station to pay close attention? Or, um...
I mean, I would think the water department could do a little program, a tutorial almost about, you know, these type of repairs and how often. And maybe it would give some kind of information so that if you received one of these, you would have a little more information to base a decision on.
Could that be interpreted as restraining trade?
I don't think so. If it was done just as through the water department, just to talk about lines and mains and what can happen and what, I mean, again, I would think we would never stay in there. You know, oh, you should never buy the type of insurance. But it would just be a little more educational about what happens.
You know, every night on TV, they're advertising something that you better be afraid of. It's a product that's going to cure this for you. And, you know, we're subjected to this every day. And it's, I wrote back to this gentleman and just told him, I've lived in my house forty years, the sewer line did collapse, it cost me seven thousand dollars, but would I buy this insurance? No. Because the sewer line collapsed after sixty, when the house was sixty years old, and it settled after. I'm not going to worry about it, you know. But I think it becomes down to buyer beware. I mean, you're talking to somebody who feels insurance for, I've got insurance for everything, but I wouldn't buy this.
So maybe we could give some sort of educational chat to the residents. Someone to victimize, to advantage of, you know, the possibility of...
I think what we could say is, even though it says it here, it says, independent company, separate from your local utility, community. So it says that, but it doesn't, it's very strong. We could emphasize that there are a number of insurance companies that send materials and they're not sponsored by the city. That's about all you can say.
That's absolutely true. We've had some, some of these have requested the city to associate with them.
Well, in National League of Cities, these people advertise. We met some of them. And we have not encouraged them or endorsed them. They just said, okay. Like anybody else is telling something.
Exactly.
Buyer beware, we can give them a little warning. Read the stuff. Maybe issues brought up there aren't much risk.
Yeah, maybe we could just talk about what...
In general.
Yeah, just in very general terms. That may provide a little base of knowledge so that when you come, you wouldn't jump on it saying, oh my God, I'm not insured.
But I think the most important thing is...
We're making probability statements. When Mike Witkowski and I, we give ten to twelve a year a break. We could say over the last five years, we've bought...
That'd be a good example.
So it becomes, I'm endorsing that one, but I'm getting twenty-five thousand, how many? Ten to twelve homes a year pays this.
It's relative, right? All right. Mr. Fraser?
I have two things. One is Hannah Haines, her, she's been appointed by National League of Cities to represent the Youth Advisory Council. And she sent a letter out to the Michigan Municipal League Foundation requesting funds to go to three meetings, they help three meetings a year. She said it's somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve hundred bucks, a meeting. I think they're in, I think they're in Washington DC. So it would be, I think they're one day meetings. Michigan Municipal League has two foundation that they grant for youth education. One is the Dennis Archer Fund, which is down to zero, and the George Goodman Fund, which is almost at zero. So they can't afford to fund her. So they're saying that, asking that whether the city has funds to support her on her trips to the Youth Advisory Council. And I've thrown it out on the table, so I don't know. I do owe Deborah Womackley an answer back, and she's from Michigan.
Yeah, I know, I talked to her today.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But maybe I'm talking...
We're doing the homework on now, but we take the best approach as a five oh one C three as opposed to using the city, or the city to provide funding. We're not sure that it's even appropriate. But it has a, we're very concerned that it has a precedent that would be very problematic.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of very, you know, up and coming youth that are interested in giving it to one. I don't know how you say no to someone else. And we have a lot of, we're very well, very much blessed with our volunteers. Any volunteer could ask to give, you know, similar kind of thing, and we, I don't know how you say yes to one. So we're looking for, I did talk to the league and they did, they gave it, they had sponsored Hannah Haines for...
She was in Boston. She was in Boston.
So she's gone before?
Yeah.
Been to?
Yeah, it was funded by the league. It was two thousand dollars. And so, you know, they, and there, the other thing we're exploring is there are local opportunities to participate. And I got a message from the league, and so we'll provide that. We're putting together some suggestions for her to...
What is she doing on her own to rate money?
That I can't answer.
You can talk about that as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it would be appropriate for only, you know, if there was a way to find some money, it would be to find part of it, and she would be just like a matching ring.
Yeah, that's true.
I asked her to, did she check with the community foundation? Because they...
That's one of the things on the list.
Yeah. She said that she did, and they told her that they didn't have any money.
So that's one down.
Yeah.
That was on the list.
I think they would struggle with this thing being, setting a precedent, and how do you say yes to one and no to someone else? Obviously, we can't say a fair deal.
So that's, but it sounds like it's well on its way to be resolved, so we're doing some research.
Okay. There's some, the library's already offered to sit down with her and help them with research. We talked about the friends of the library as well. And they basically utilize that, those funds strictly for immediate life breaks. So they didn't think that fit in either of us.
Okay.
Okay. Your second thing?
And the second thing is, and I've already talked about a little bit, it's a number of rule tens that we use in the study meetings. I understand rule tens are supposed to be for those things that are emergency. They should be used, as far as I'm concerned, rarely. I think if we're going to be transparent, we need to do our work where the majority of the people have an opportunity to see what we're doing. By doing rule tens in a study meeting, fifteen people know what we're doing. And I think that we ought to, we ought to restrict the number of rule tens that we use. Al Conde and I went nose to nose on this when he was council president, and we were like two stray dogs at each other, because it's been bothering me from that for that long. I think we ought to restrict the number of rule tens.
I will do my best. Some of this this evening was because of what we cleared the agenda of that meeting.
I understand that there's, you know, we could have other, we could have another meeting.
You're going to get your wish. Believe me, you're going to get your wish. There are going to be more meetings.
Well, then we ought to do the, our public business in the public.
Yeah. I hear you. And some of it is certainly beyond the council president's control.
I understand that. And I understand that there are emergency things that come up that we need to do right away. And I think that was the concept of immediate need to act, not delay doing work so that it becomes an immediate need. That's terrible when you get old.
You're doing a good job.
Just quickly, I just want to put on your plate. When we were talking about the new committee, the economic development committee, there is a real need to have a focus on revenue generation. How can we, as a city, increase revenue? And however you want to shape that, Mr. President, but there has to be a focus on best practices. I know Councilwoman Jordan brings up parking, I'm not as supportive of that, but, you know, there is a concept called taxes in lieu of, I mean, payment in lieu of taxes. There is, for our parks and rec programming, for, it's just different things. I mean, we have our dormant parks. We could make those dog parks and people paying permits to use them, and we know we need a dog park, and it could infuse some money into parks and recs. But somewhere along the line, as we process all of our tax abatements, which tonight was a wonderful example, something we need to do, we seem to master the process of tax abatement, but we haven't mastered the really serious effort of generating revenue. And we know we have limitations as far as raising taxes, and right now is the sweet spot because everyone's taxes are going down. But you know, when it was at the top, that's all we heard, that's all we heard, is our taxes are too high in this city. And so now is a sweet spot where we need to be very committed and focused on how we can generate revenue. And economic development, there are some limitations to that, because we can say all day what we want, we got to get the developers who own the land. And I think that when you talk about that, I don't know how you're going to do, you'll probably do it, but we got to get these folks that own the land to come to the table and say what they want to do. And so I know that that may happen, but just us sitting in a room saying what we want doesn't mean hell be if we don't own the property. And so that tax revenue, revenue generating must be a priority for the city. That's what I'm taking, Mr. President.
I think it's been on table for several years, ever since we went into our...
We'll trade you dog parks for parks.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
They're, I mean, they're fun, you know.
But that's not revenue, that's not revenue.
When he brought that to the table several years ago, you know, we were dipping into the bank, that's when he started saying, you know, you got to bring more money to the table. So, you know, it's on the table, and I think it's been on the table.
We got to do something.
Creative ideas, I think.
Yeah.
You just got to think, what ways can you generate what revenue, what other ways? That's all about, and that's not the only way to park it. That's just one of the many ways.
All right, Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, I agree with everything you said. And I agree with everything that's being said at this table about that. And I think one thing that we definitely need to want in our agenda meeting on is the marketing of this city. I think we need Cable Fifteen Community Relations somehow at the same table with us, because I don't think we do the best job of marketing our city. And I was talking earlier, I sat down with Terry and Shelley Freeman on another issue. And, you know, I don't even think our website does our, you know, I think it kind of, it doesn't do us a service of what we want to promote at this city, especially on the front page of the website. I mean, it was a good web, relevant website, you know, maybe, you know, three or four years ago, but we need to be even thinking about our marketing of our city differently. And then we get those projects. We get, we're able to tell our story a little bit better and have developers come and see what we're doing with a pending overlay district, because we've marketed it better, because we promoted a video that says, you know, what's new in Southfield? It's this creative new development type, here's some plans that we're looking at. If you're a developer, contact, you know, so and so at this office or whatever. So I think that we need to really have a study session specific to the marketing of our city and include Cable Fifteen and community relations on that, because like we just heard, you know, everything moves at a cheetah's space now, pace now. And everything is so, so fast paced that what was an award winning website maybe in two thousand and nine, it might not even be relevant in the formula that we need in two thousand and thirteen. So...
I'll discuss this with the city.
But you know what happens when you start bunny rapid, bunny hopping, and you go, we need a new website, or we need to market ourselves, that energy can be...
I agree, hand in hand.
But yeah, it does, but if you start, you have a whole study session on just...
My reward's more meetings.
Marketing, we can put that same energy on, let's come to the table and see how we can get revenue.
Yeah, but I think that we can be the council that spends a lot of energy this year getting things done that we haven't been getting done. And, you know, I know that those things go hand in hand, you know. The marketing of a city and the economic development, it's not, you know, two different apples and oranges. It's really one creates the other, and then the other creates the other. So I see that as a central piece that's been overlooked.
But, I mean, we did this early, you know, years and years ago. We started focusing on marketing, marketing, marketing. But the real dollars still didn't come to the table. So we're in a different environment. So now we've got to start bringing real dollars to the table, you know. We've got to really...
Yeah, we had a commercial firm, marketing firm, Channell, Channell. Yeah, and they came up with Southfield Center.
I just think we should send that energy and really bring the dollars to the table. Committee that we formed, let's give that...
I'll put that a little bit down.
Anything else I have, when I, I am, we have had our small budget for each council person, I'm not asking for an increase, but I am wondering if we could change the allotment for the cell phone. And a lot of plans are now more expensive. It's been forty-five dollars per hour. And so it's just a matter of moving money, it's not about more money, but it's just there's a limit of forty-five dollars on reimbursement. And so I'd like to recommend sixty. And I'm not sure, Ms. Ward or Mr. Schreit, how to proceed with that if there's current.
Where are you going to move it from? Me too.
Well, when you, when you submit your bill, it comes out of your five thousand dollars, your phone bill.
It just come out of the training, I thought travel.
No, it comes out of your, it comes out of your one thirty account. All, each, each cell phone.
So it does not charge the council budget?
Oh, I thought it was.
So this will change that.
I was under, I was mistaken there. I don't, for instance, I don't use my entire travel buddy, so I haven't ever, so, but because of, you know, I was shocked when I got my, I have a plan for seven hundred minutes a month, I never go over seven hundred minutes. I had eleven hundred some minutes and a three hundred dollar cell phone bill.
Walmart?
It was all Walmart.
Yeah.
Well, I can hardly wait to see my, my phone bill. I have three hundred minutes. And I have, and my phone bill is forty-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Yeah.
So I paid sixteen cents on my own.
Is there any, has there ever been a policy where any access on that can be charged to your individual accounts?
I don't know. I don't know, I'll, since I'm mistaken about, I thought it just came out of.
Roll up, roll up into it.
I'm not asking, not at this time, and right now, I've already paid my cell phone bill, but between the text messages and all the phone calls, you know, my number was out there, and I spoke to everybody that called me, as I think it's important to do. So, but I have never had a telephone bill.
But is it feasible to have each council person get an unlimited plan, and what that costs, that's what will be budgeted? That makes sense. I don't understand why you have such few minutes, but.
Well, it was a.
Because I don't, I don't like.
It was established in the clerk's office, that's the truth.
Back in 1997.
It's not uniform, you all purchased your own type plan.
You get, because it's our phone, you get a $45 allotment. That's why I was, I was really ticked off when I found out that my phone, my private phone was being put out on the market so that everybody texted and called me, because it was my phone, that's not the, it's not the city's phone.
Well, I will leave it to you to.
Yeah. Let me, let me just, Metro PPA, it's gonna be a combination of that.
I'm not looking to answer the budget, but I should be clear. And if you wanted to reduce my travel budget, I'm okay with that, if you mind you something like that, but that would have to go through the whole council. So just let us know what you like. Is there anything else? Then this meeting is up to you.